July 1st, 2021, and I'd like to call to order the Village of Pinehurst Planning and Zoning Board regular meeting. My name is Jeremy Hooper, and I'll be sitting in for our chair today, Cindy Burnett, who will be absent. We will also have another excused absent with Jack Farrell. However, we do have seven members of the Planning and Zoning Board today, which represents a quorum, and we can do some business. So, thank you for attending. I would like to remind everyone that plans on speaking that we will be recorded, so please speak clearly and directly into the microphone when you are doing so, and please make sure that it's on. So, let's go ahead and introduce ourselves, beginning at my far right, and let's go ahead and go to my far left, beginning with Paul.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Roberts.
Good afternoon, Philip Shoemaker.
Good afternoon, Senator Austin.
Hello, Julia Latham.
Hey, Matt Jones.
David Elzamora.
I also want to introduce Alex Cameron, Principal Planner for the Village of Pinehurst, and Liaison to the P&amp;Z Board, as well as Darren Burridge, Planning Director for the Village as well. We're going to follow the agenda today, just so everybody knows, if you need one, there should be one in the back of the room. We're going to follow it directly. So, the first order of business is approval of the June 3rd P&amp;Z minutes. Does anybody have any additions or corrections on the board? None? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the June 3rd minutes?
I make a motion to approve the June 3rd meeting.
Hearing the motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, opposed, the minutes from the June 3rd P&amp;Z meeting are approved as written. So, moving into general business, we have a public hearing, number one. We have a conditional district rezoning application by Bob Koontz Design on behalf of the United States Golf Association. For this application, we're going to follow the following steps. Alex Cameron will introduce the application as supplemental material to our already provided agenda packet. After he concludes, we'll have some questions from the board. We will then welcome the applicant to present their project. After they have concluded, we will move into a public comment session. If you wish to speak, we ask that you print your name on the signup sheet, again, at the back of the room. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less, and please remember that we are being recorded and speak directly into the microphone. We'll then allow each board member to engage with the applicant and ask the questions needed to ultimately achieve our recommendation to counsel. It is our intention to keep these questions and comments relevant and prudent to the application before us. We'll then exit the public hearing and either render a decision or a continuance for the application today. With that being said, Alex, it's your floor.
Before we get started, could we have a motion to turn to the public hearing, please?
So, that's an important step. So, can I get a motion to exit the regular meeting and enter into the public hearing?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, we are now out of the regular meeting and into the public hearing, number one. Alex, your floor.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. So, as Jeremy did state, public hearing, number one, this is for a zoning map amendment request from RD Recreation Development District and H Hotel District to VMUCD Village Mixed Use Conditional District, and this is for a portion of parcel ID 00025800. The total area is plus or minus 6.29 acres. The property owner is Resorts of Pinehurst, Inc., and as Jeremy also mentioned, the applicant is USGA with Bob Koontz and others with Koontz Jones Design and other firms representing today. Here to the right, you can kind of see an area depiction of the subject properties totally outlined in the orange. The recently approved hotel conditional district rezoning for the Resort Lodge outlined in red with the horizontal crosshatch. There's a sliver of OP, Office and Professional zoning on the property, the pink being the aforementioned H Hotel District zoning, which is subject to this request, and this other area outlined in blue is the rest of the balance of the 6.29 acres for the Village Mixed Use Conditional District. The current land use, again, it is owned RD largely for Recreation Development District, and is privately owned recreation facilities, including golf, tennis, pool complex, et cetera. Also associated facilities, including clubhouse with meeting space, restaurant, and pro shop. Of course, again, the aforementioned recently approved 34-room lodge with locker room, meeting space, and a bar. The proposed use for this conditional district rezoning, again, the Village Mixed Use Conditional District for a second USGA headquarters, including a visitor center with a museum and administrative offices with a testing center. This public hearing was duly posted. Adjacent owners have been notified, and the public hearing was published. So, conditional rezoning has two main parts. One is the rezoning request itself, or the change to the zoning map, and that is to Village Mixed Use Conditional District. The other part is the required general concept plan, or sometimes we refer to as the GCP. If approved, the general concept plan becomes a site-specific development plan and part of the zoning approval and the requirements in and of itself. So, any conditions that would be associated with consideration and ultimate approval of conditional district rezoning would be applied to that general concept plan and just to this proposal, not to the overall Village Mixed Use or to any other areas outside of those parameters. The process for conditional district rezoning, initial staff and TRC, or the Technical Review Committee, which is made up of administrative staff of varying disciplines, including fire, engineering, utilities, et cetera. We review the application and the material with the applicant, and we go through a round of reviews and issue comments and have corrections, and the resubmitted back to staff will review. Also, a neighborhood meeting is required for any rezoning applications within the jurisdiction of the Village of Pinehurst if it would result in an increase or intensity of uses. This was held by the applicant in April 7th, 2021. Because the property is also located within a local historic district, review and issuance of a certificate of approbability for any exterior modifications, including new construction associated with these facilities, needed to be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, which happened at their regular meeting on April 22nd earlier this year. A COA was approved and issued. The Planning and Zoning Board Public Hearing, which we're here for this evening. Following that, there will be a Village Council Public Hearing. Date is still to be determined on that pending the outcome of this evening's meeting. Ultimately, if a conditional zoning is approved, then the applicant can move forward with construction drawings and submit straight to TRC as an administrative review and approval, and then the work can begin. Conditional zoning map amendments, these are legislative decisions, and therefore legislative public hearings are held in this process, which does require the statutory public hearing and notice requirements, and the recommendation must be formulated by this board to Village Council. The applicant with conditional district rezonings may propose, and the local government can consider specific conditions related to the specific project. These conditions, however, must be mutually agreed upon and consented to in writing by the applicant, the owner, and with the governing board. You also shall consider the currently adopted comprehensive plan when considering zoning map amendments after seeking input from the public after the public hearing, and adoption of a consistency statement with the comprehensive plan is also required. The material that is included with the application before the board tonight includes a project narrative, the general concept plan, which also includes a parking and circulation plan and a conceptual utilities plan. Architectural character and elevations, along with renderings, have also been presented. Neighborhood meeting summary, which is included in the board's packet, a trip generation, parking assessment, and also a biological assessment for impacts to red cockaded woodpeckers on the property. So, again, we're going to a proposed Village Mixed Use Conditional District. It actually includes the development of two facilities. One, the visitor center and museum, which totals plus or minus, according to the general concept plan, 15,400 square feet. The second building, the larger building, being an housing administrative offices with a testing center for research and development totaling plus or minus 25,100 square feet. This proposal would still allow for the accommodation of the existing uses and the other zoning designations on the larger parcel, but would apply, again, the zoning classification and any agreed-to conditions to the specific area shown and related to these new facilities. Little bit of orientation, the area is located off Carolina Vista Drive, which is a private drive, and borders the railroad along NC Highway 5 on the western portion. Here's the requested conditions table. So, the first three all are related to the table of uses or allowed uses within this district. So, within our development ordinance, do allow for conditioning of allowed uses that have not been contemplated or not defined within our development ordinance. Golf equipment, research, development, and testing is being proposed to be allowed within this specific conditional request. Also, oddly enough, our development ordinance does not have a quote-unquote "general office" as in allowed use. It's a little bit more specific to like professional services, et cetera. So, to allow for a general office, allowed use in the VMUCD District, and also the same for a welcome center, which, again, is proposed with the smaller of the two facilities. Proposed condition number four is related to setbacks within Village Mixed Use. You have setbacks that orient the buildings quite up front and to the property line, ranging from a zero to 10-foot setback, depending on which yard, the front, the side, or the rear. The proposed setbacks are as follows: a 25-foot front yard, a 15-foot side yard, a 50-foot side street yard, and a 20-foot rear yard. Signage, the Pinehurst Development Ordinance allows for an applicant to seek for an increase in signage by 50%, and that's being proposed. Sidewalks within Section 9.16 are site plan development standards. Development ordinance requires insulation of sidewalks along the frontage of all existing streets. The applicant is proposing to not have to meet this requirement. Condition number seven is related to parking spaces and ratio calculation. There really is no change for proposed parking for the visitor center museum, which would be at a space of one per 300 square feet. Administrative offices, it's not necessarily, again, explicitly stated in the PDO what the parking requirement would be. Applicants proposing to park for the same requirement at one space per 300 square feet. And then finally, the golf equipment and development with the testing center, the applicant is seeking to not provide a parking requirement for that area, and they've provided justification for that as well, which we will discuss a little bit later. Condition eight is related to the parking surface for the 109 proposed spaces. There is a section in the development ordinance that says allows for the consideration for alternate paving material, so they are requesting to provide some sort of alternate paving material other than asphalt, as long as it's been approved by the village engineer and in compliance with the Village's Engineers and Standards and Specifications Manual. The PDO does also require up to 25% of parking spaces to be a graded gravel. The adjacent land uses and zoning, we have a table of the adjacent uses to the left and the area zoning map to the right. You can see there various other zoning districts, largely to the east is all property, and is contiguously in the same ownership and part of the greater golf course area. The public conservation area in the village green just to the northeast, the San Hills Women's Exchange is just nearby there as well. Residential areas, medium-density residential here, the R20. There's some residential multifamily that borders to the west, and then more recreation development and golfing across Highway 5. The 2019 comprehensive plan, so largely in the conservation and growth maps, the existing and future land use map for the area would remain unchanged, as it would still be considered private open space. Furthermore, guiding principle number five, labeled "taking care of business" in the 2019 comprehensive plan, does state that the village should support the golf tourism and healthcare industries that make up the economic backbone of this community. Further, there are opportunities to diversify the types of attractions, businesses, and amenities available to golf enthusiasts, and in order to stay attractive in the industry, the Village of Pinehurst will need to adapt to meet the needs and desires of players and fans of golf. One of these recommendations in Implementation Strategy 5.11 on page 176 suggests a golf museum could further activate the village core and other nodes. The existing land uses previously mentioned would not change with this proposed rezoning. Here is a depiction of the USGA-proposed facilities and the recently approved Resort Lodge. You can see here to the south, here's the area that was recently approved and subject to the 34-room lodge with the open area, locker room, and bar. Some of the parking facilities here that are being adjusted based on that proposal. And then to the north and to the west here, the ellipse, as you enter into Carolina Vista Drive, you'll see the smaller building that's proposed here, which is, again, the visitor center museum, and then the larger building, which is the admin building with the testing center. Parking facilities, also another access is a right-in, right-out, proposed only at Cherokee Road, and it kind of borders along the NC 5 area and kind of nestled within the existing pine grove. Little bit better depiction of the general concept plan, Sheet L 2.0, that's been presented. Little bit more detail, including signage, little bit closer area of the parking that's proposed, the access, the sidewalks, of course, the building footprints, access to the site as the right-in, the right-out, Cherokee, the access to the Carolina Vista. You'll see a lighter shading of all the existing facilities that are there nearby. The green shaded areas are the landscaped areas and the landscape buffer that will be required as part of the development as well. Here is a parking and circulation plan that was provided by the applicant as Sheet 2.1 with the general concept plan. We'll move on to the buildings now. So, the applicant has also stated, you know, provided elevations and renderings of the proposed structures, along with some architectural characteristics from other buildings within the jurisdiction and inspirations that help design and shape and mold the buildings that are proposed. Again, the Historic Preservation Commission did issue a COA for the proposed new construction at the regular meeting in April. The tallest height of the two buildings would be just over 36 feet. The maximum building height within the Village Mixed Use District is 50 feet, so it's well under that height requirement. The applicant, as previously stated, does propose to modify the setbacks of the VMU District. Again, typically within the Village Mixed Use District, building placements within a range of zero to 10 feet. These further setbacks or more restrictive setbacks are due to the proposed placement of the structure on the property and how it kind of sets back from the right-of-way in the property line, and there would be no issues from a staff perspective with this condition. Here are just a few images that were presented as part of the application. Here are some renderings. Again, starting with the one on the top left, smaller building being the visitor center museum, administrative offices. This would be facing, looking to the west, and you can see the parking area here, and off in the horizon there will be NC Highway 5. To the right's a different perspective, looking more toward the, from north to south. Bottom right is facing the buildings, looking at them, again, kind of facing east to west. Then another depiction on the bottom left. And this continues, and of course, the applicant will be able to give a little bit more detail on the design of the buildings. Here's some more static elevation drawings, but it is dimensioned, so it gives the overall size and bulk of the buildings. The building materials, there is a proposed, like bronze-colored metal roofing with the structures. There's a mix of shake and sort of lap, and also with board and batten-style siding as a fiber cement. The color tones are shown here on the right, very muted, light grays, off-white beiges, and then, of course, brick proposed for the foundation materials. The signage, as mentioned earlier, the applicant is requesting a increase in 50% of the allowed signage. Staff has prepared a table of what the size limitations are for signage within the Village Mixed Use District. As you can see, it's fairly constricting, it's fairly limited, especially when you're considering buildings of the size that are proposed. So, within the light tan shaded column, you'll see exactly what that 50% increase in signage would permit, and the applicant has shown what they would like to have as proposed signage at the bottom left of the general concept plan, Sheet 2.0. Environmental impacts, there are no flood, plain, there's no wetlands, no other environmental impacts really associated with the property. It does lie within an active cluster for the red cockaded woodpeckers. The applicant has submitted a biological assessment, and we've gotten concurrence from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that there would be no impacts with this proposal on the red cockated woodpeckers. As previously mentioned, the property is located within a public water supply watershed. Special intensity allocation has now been granted with the approval of the conditional district application for the lodge by Village Council last week. However, with the property being located within a watershed and special intensity allocation being granted, BMPs or best management practices will, must be implemented in order to treat stormwater runoff. So, more about the site features that are proposed and shown on the general concept plan. Again, the primary access is going to be shared with the overall Pinehurst Resort and Country Club campus via the traffic circle at Cherokee Road and Carolina Vista Drive. A secondary access drive is located at intersection with Cherokee Road in a right-in, right-out fashion. North Carolina DOT has reviewed this and is also recommending a 50-foot right-turn lane or right-of-way there associated with this facility. All landscaping is proposed to meet the requirements and development ordinance, including a planted buffer along the perimeter of the development, abutting the adjacent right-of-way. This will be a 10-foot planted buffer. Also, parking perimeter and interior and landscaping will be required, and these will include a mix of long-leaf pine requirements, understory tree requirements, and shrubs. Applicant is proposed to retain as many mature trees on the site, and that is indicated on the general concept plan. The ones marked red will obviously be removed based on the construction of the facilities itself. Greens will be the ones that will be proposed, and they're also indicating that they will be planting many more back than will be removed. All exterior lighting is proposed to meet the PDO requirements. Stormwater management is shown in the detention areas that are depicted on the general concept plan. Pedestrian connectivity is shown on Sheet 2.01, as mentioned, the parking and circulation plan is provided on the site mainly by using the existing brick sidewalks along Carolina Vista Drive to the greater Pinehurst Resort and Country Club campus. Sidewalks are provided internally to the development of the facilities, from the parking areas to the buildings and within the garden area. Again, as previously mentioned, the applicant is requesting a condition to not install sidewalks along the Cherokee Road frontage, but is proposing, in an effort, an easement granted to the village to gain access and have an ability to install and work out an agreement at a later date. The comprehensive plan does state that a goal is for us to provide pedestrian circulation throughout the village. The condition that the applicants are seeking, which is condition number six, to not install the sidewalk, again, in lieu of, they provide an easement for future sidewalk construction to the village. While a sidewalk would not connect to a pedestrian network at this time in the west, it is a long-term goal, as stated in the 2019 comprehensive plan, that we improve the pedestrian network, and this would include the area to the west there and along and adjacent to NC Highway 5 and McKenzie Road on the west at that stoplight in that intersection. Staff is open, and we have been, to discussing a pedestrian easement along the Cherokee Road frontage, especially if it could be extended around the existing railroad trestle to connect to NC Highway 5, which has been an impediment, and it could create a better pedestrian circulation system around the entire Pinehurst Resort Country Club. Picture here on the left kind of really can illustrate the impediment there with the railroad trestle getting and having some sort of pedestrian activity there along NC Highway 5. The map to the right is, the orange lines there show the existing pedestrian sidewalks that we have or walk paths, and you can see, here's the intersection, if you can see my cursor on the screen, at the roundabout with Cherokee Road and Carolina Vista, and you can see this is that existing brick sidewalk network that follows into the property. West of that, there is virtually no pass. Parking, with this application, they are proposing surface parking, up to 109 spaces provided. Staff is prepared within the report, and it's also here included on this slide, the number of spaces based on the proposed facilities. We would total 127, they're proposing 109, and again, that is showing the requested condition to not park for the testing center. Also, this existing location is being utilized for parking spaces currently by the Pinehurst Resort and Country Club. According to the applicant's material, this would displace about 88 parking spaces. As part of the lodge project, Pinehurst Resort Country Club and the Village Council agreed to a condition to create 100 spaces at this greenhouse lot, which is just south off NC Highway 5 and adjacent to the harness track to make up for this displaced parking. The applicant, again, requesting a condition not provide parking for the testing center, and that's because the applicant's indicated that that space will be largely utilized by the employees that will already be covered in the parking requirement in the administrative offices. They have submitted a parking analysis to try to support this condition, and indicates that there would be enough parking space provided on a site to serve a daily parking demand. And it is an important note that largely on the weekends, that this area would be vacated as the employees would not be there, not part of the typical workday, so this could ultimately really lend itself to a true shared parking agreement with the Greater Pinehurst Resort and Country Club. The parking surface, again, the applicant is seeking to not be required to provide full asphalt paving for the parking areas, and in lieu of, do like a gravel tack coat. We haven't really gotten a great justification on why, obviously, we can definitely get that this evening and have a better understanding. Also, there is a bit of conflicts between our two regulatory documents, the development ordinance and our Village's Engineering Standards and Specifications Manual. As previously mentioned, the PDO does allow for alternate parking, is permissive in nature. However, our Engineering Standards Manual does require paved parking. So, with those two, or lack thereof for the justification, at this point, staff and the Technical Review Committee don't support this condition. Planning and zoning board action, so here's what's expected of the board. When you have these public hearings come before you, you do conduct them, you review the material that's been presented before you, along with the staff recommendation, and you consider the 2019 comprehensive plan. After holding the public hearing and receiving input from the public, you should take one of the following actions. You can recommend approval of the proposed conditional zoning with stated specific conditions and adopt statement of consistency with the comprehensive plan. You may recommend denial of the proposed conditional rezoning with stated specific conditions and adopt a statement of consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. Finally, if there are more questions that need answered, you have the opportunity to continue the public hearing, but you must do to a time, date, place certain. So, with that, we'll get ready to conclude with staff's recommendation. Staff does recommend approval of the proposed rezoning request for this parcel, parcel ID 00025800, to Village Mixed Use Conditional District, with the conditions listed below, and recommend that the board do adopt the statement of consistency that has been provided to you. We recommend the conditions 1 through 5 as proposed by the applicant. Again, Table Conditions 1, 2, and 3, all about the uses for the golf equipment resource and development testing, general office, welcome center. 4 is for the setbacks, 5 is to allow for the increase in signage by 50% in area. Staff does not support condition number 6, which is to not install the sidewalk. We do recommend condition 7 to, for the parking ratios, meaning to not park for the testing center. And number 8, we do not support the parking surface as stated previously. Staff does recommend an additional condition on the general concept plan. You noticed a proposed future greenhouse. We would propose a condition that would just solidify that and memorialize that a little bit more and permit the location of the greenhouse as shown with the general footprint, and later, there will obviously be other approvals that any such greenhouse would have to go through. So, with that, that concludes staff's presentation at this point.
Thank you, Alex. Does any member of the board have any questions at this point in time for staff?
The parking spot, the 100 spaces over at the track, who owns that land? And if it's not owned by USGA or Pinehurst Resort, is there a lease to the village?
The Pinehurst Resort currently occupies that property. It's their property.
It's their property?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Alex. Appreciate that presentation. So, at this time, we'll welcome the applicant to the seats, Mr. May and Mr. Koontz and team. Do you mind introducing your team or having everybody introduce themselves and say what company they're with? Thank you.
My name is John May. I'm a local attorney with the law firm of Robbins, May &amp; Rich, and I'm here on behalf of the United States Golf Association with respect to its desire to locate golf house Pinehurst in the village. Pursuant to the village development ordinance, the 6.39-acre site has to be rezoned and ordered. Pursuant to the village development ordinance, the 6.39 acre site has to be rezoned in order to permit the location and construction of Golf House Pinehurst. With me tonight are the following people, some of whom are sitting here, and the others of whom are in the audience, and I'll ask them to raise their hand. First of all, Dr. Ron Jarris, who's Senior Managing Director for Public Services. Janine Driscoll, Director of Brand Communication. Rich Tidalde, Head of Campus Operations. To my left, Bob Kuntz of Kuntz Design, with regard to site and landscape design. Also at the table are Brandy Thompson with Clearscape Architects. And in the audience, Tim Carpenter with LKC Engineering. We have with Kevin Dean, who is with Kimberly Horn, the Traffic Analysis. And we have Janine Powers with the General Contractor Gilband. Having previously secured the conceptual plan approval by the historic permission, the USGA is here before you tonight for the next step required in the ordinance. We will present to you a detailed review of what is planned, and we will be prepared to answer any questions you have with respect to that. We would respectfully request, at the end of our presentation, that you strongly consider making a recommendation to the village council that the request for zoning be, rezoning be approved. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jarris for his presentation.
Good afternoon. It's a true honor and a pleasure for me to be with you this afternoon. As I've told many people in recent days and months, Pinehurst is just one of my favorite places in golf. It is always an honor and a pleasure to be in this village, to feel the hospitality and generosity of this community. So I can tell you, for me personally, as well as on behalf of the USGA, the thought of being able to do something meaningful and memorable in Pinehurst, and to give back to this community, is something that means a tremendous amount to us as an organization. As I shared when we met with the HPC earlier this year in April, we really can think of no better place than Pinehurst to take this next step in expanding the USGA's operations as we advance our mission to serve the game of golf. What this community represents to the game of golf really cannot be overstated. Likewise, what this community means to the USGA cannot be overstated. For more than 125 years, we truly have a shared history, a shared history of individuals, important moments, whether it's the Tufts family, Donald Ross, our great champions, Payne Stewart, Michelle Wee, so many people whose contributions, accomplishments have helped shape the unique character of this community. We've partnered with you to help shape that history in the past, and we're really energized to be working with you as we step forward and look ahead to a new era. The opportunity that Golf House Pinehurst represents for us is that it allows us to share our vision and our mission with your community and with your visitors. This project is about more than championships. We all know how important the US Open's been in the past, but this is much more than championships. It's about creating a permanent home for the important work that the USGA does to lead our game forward. It's a home for our scientific experts, our technical experts, that serve our governance and sustainability functions. It's also a place where we can connect golfers with our museum collections, our incredibly rich historical collections, and share those rich assets that really demonstrate our love for the game. We think that this important work of the USGA, quite honestly, just needs to be more visible. New Jersey's been a wonderful home for us, but quite honestly, we just don't engage with enough golfers, enough leaders in the golf community, and we know we can do great things for the game. We can expand the reach of our programs, we can expand the knowledge that we deliver to the game so that golf can continue to thrive long into the future. Importantly for us, we know that locating these important, mission-critical activities in Pinehurst will make them better. They're going to make us stronger as an organization, because we understand and appreciate just how much this community and its soul and its heart are connected to the game. So it's for reasons like this, when I think about visibility or access to this new USGA campus, these were really important factors when we, as we looked and considered various locations around the village or around the area for our new buildings. This location that we ultimately settled on, with support from Bob Dedman and the Pinehurst Resort leadership at the intersection of Cherokee and Carolina Vista, it's important. It's visible, but importantly, it's walkable. It's walkable from the village, it's walkable from the resort, it's accessible along the resort shuttle routes, and that helps make it accessible to our visitors. Another really important aspect of our mission that we hope that you'll see, that we hope comes through really clearly in the plans for Golf House Pinehurst, is our commitment to sustainability and our commitment to the environment. Of course, our game is dependent on a healthy environment. You'll see elements of environmental sustainability woven throughout the project. Let me call attention to just two details that you'll see in our plan. The first, which Brandy will go into some detail about, is the restoration of the pine grove at the north edge of the property. And then second is the inclusion of a pollinator garden, which is a key feature of our site plan. These features give us a chance, importantly, to demonstrate and educate about the work that the USGA does, to promote healthier relationships between golf and the environment. It's a demonstration of our, not just concepts of sustainability, but what it means to be a good environmental steward. We also believe they'll add to the natural beauty and the outdoor assets of Pinehurst, which are a clear nod to Olmsted's original plan and original village, original vision for the village of Pinehurst. Ultimately, we have a high level of confidence that the USGA's presence in Pinehurst will be a mutually beneficial relationship in many aspects. We hope to deliver value to your community. We also know that we will benefit from what we can learn and the relationships that we can foster here. We're confident that the selection of Pinehurst as the first anchor site for USGA championships means that we can deliver tangible value back to this community in the form of economic impact, visibility, and reputation. Yes, it's of course important to us that the state of North Carolina and Moore County have recognized this value, and they're supporting our efforts, but every bit, and really more important to us, is the partnership with this village and with this community, and we greatly appreciate your support. The USGA has great confidence in the team that's here, that Brandy and Bob and others behind us, that we've assembled to create and to deliver this project in ways that are respectful to this community and its needs. Many of you know the Clearscapes team. They're very proud of their North Carolina heritage, they're proud of their relationship with this village, and projects that extend beyond Golf House Pinehurst. Brandy and the Clearscapes team have taken great care in working to understand the unique needs of this community from a planning perspective. As a close to my thoughts, let me just offer my sincere thanks to this board and to the professional staff of the village. To date, they truly have been exemplary in their support of our efforts, and we thank you for your consideration of our project. We're really excited about the future that this project represents, and we're excited to contribute to the special character of this community.
All right. So thanks again for having us today. We're excited to be here, and with that, we'll dive right into the presentation. Part of our work is, in any community, especially those with such historic heritage and architectural heritage as the village of Pinehurst, is to really dig in and understand and research and immerse ourselves as much as possible into the places that we work. And we were captivated initially by the Olmsted plan, right? The curvilinear street forms, the uniqueness of the large landscape buffers along each side of every road, the sense of discovery around every curve. Just all in all, we're awed to be able to work in this environment, and we wanted to be sensitive to this overall kind of development pattern that Olmsted established from the beginning. You'll notice that the curvilinear road forms lend itself to an informal relationship of the buildings to one another, so as you just look across the kind of site plan and site map there, you see just a very casual and gentle sort of organic relationship. One other piece that we found especially fascinating was the pine grove, which happens to be the location of the USGA Golf House Pinehurst, and so we wanted to really kind of dive into the specific, special nature of this place. We know that from the founding of Pinehurst, it was particularly special, it was the lone sand of pines after the naval store industry had swept through and devastated the landscape. And we were amazed by, we found far more than just these historic postcards, we were just amazed at the sense of specialness that this pine grove kind of represented for the community and the uniqueness of it, and we wanted to try to just bring that back and celebrate it on the property of Golf House Pinehurst. We also, being from North Carolina, growing up in eastern North Carolina, I grew up with stories of the long-leaf pine forest, right? This was something that was sort of part of childhood fantasy, listening to my dad and my grandfather talk about it, and so to be able to dive in and say, okay, what was that rich ecology? What was the ancient ecological sort of history of this place and of the sand hills that made it special? And how can we start to weave that narrative from a sustainability standpoint, but also just from a specialness of this place standpoint in the site design of Golf House Pinehurst? All right, so everyone in this room is well aware of where the site is in proximity to everything else, but we just wanted to note, and this builds on what Rand had said earlier, that Golf House Pinehurst is positioned uniquely. It's along a central primary access for the clubhouse, but it's also got a wonderful sort of front door relationship to the village. So architecturally, we wanted to make sure that everything that we did from the site design, but also from the architecture, was a reflection of both the resort and the village. And that started with really thinking about how to locate the buildings on the site. The 40,000, approximately 40,000 square foot facility in a single building might overwhelm the landscape, so we decided to break it into two buildings, which breaks down the scale, makes it relatable to other commercial structures in the village, and it gave us the ability to get a little more playful with the landscape. So you can see noted to the north is that sort of restored pine grove, and it's our intent to really wrap that feeling around all sides of the building as much as possible, preserving as many trees as possible, and also then introducing some interesting elements from the long-leaf pine savanna, those low, undershore replantings that we shared in some of those previous images. Also, you'll notice the location of the pollinator garden. Help me out, thanks Bob. Kind of going in between the two buildings in that pie-shaped area. It is a centerpiece for the USGA where they can, from an educational standpoint, really tell the story of the USGA's sustainability work and put that in front of residents and visitors to Pinehurst. You'll also notice that parking kind of loops along the backside, and we're just trying to tuck that in and hide it as much as possible, and by pushing the buildings back, which is part of the conditions that we're asking for tonight, is to basically open up the opportunity to create some lawns and some landscapes that are very familiar and appropriate for the village of Pinehurst. There's also an event lawn you can kind of see located to the back of the test center there as well. All right, and the location also was studied really carefully in relationship to the existing trees and the existing impervious surface on the site. We located the larger of the two buildings, the test center to the south, directly on top of the tennis courts, to disturb as few trees as possible, and the building to the north is located in that sort of sandy parking area, and it does impact some trees, but we tried to minimize that as much as possible. You'll also note that the drive and the parking where Bob is highlighting in the back, that is directly on top of the existing parking area that the resort uses for shuttle parking currently, and there is a swath of trees that's impacted as it ties into Carolina Vista, but that connection point was critical for the flow. And there's a small stand of trees to the west of the test center that you can see, and most of those are younger, smaller, and they're kind of clumped together in a less-than-attractive way. So we think removing those and then replacing them with something in other areas of the site could benefit the site as a whole. A lot of the trees are also aging out or getting older, they're certainly of one generation, and in order to establish a really healthy pine grove that will last for generations, we hope to introduce sort of a range of ages of younger pine trees to the site as well so that, over time, the pine grove can be sustained. All right, so architecturally, you have so many great examples to look at, but we just sort of couldn't help ourselves. When we dove into historical research and the historical photographs of the Carolina Hotel, we were just, we just continued to be shocked by how well that large mass of a building was broken down through architectural elements. So the deep front porch that wraps the entire sort of lower level of the building really grounds it, ties it to the landscape, and creates that welcoming environment, and also reduces the perception of the height of the building. The five-part plan, which you can kind of see in the three sort of main prominent vertical elements with the piece that's pushed back, also further breaks down the massing, the use of dormers, cupolas, and chimneys that articulate and punctuate that roof line really help break down the scale. So everything that was done, the grouping of the windows, the sort of banding of the siding, was done to mitigate scale. We wanted to take cues from that. We were also fascinated by the development of the clubhouse, especially in the early years. It went from a simple two-story kind of viewing deck with a small enclosed space, and very rapidly, over the first sort of several years, it was added on to and expanded, and this is the 1903 version of it, that we just, we fell in love with it. There are so many photographs of spectators just like this taking in the game of golf, interacting with one another. It felt very alive and also very appropriate to the village when we studied it. And looking a little bit more broadly at the resort and the village, we noticed a prominence of hipped roof forms, so we've taken that into account. You also can kind of pick out some of the other sort of colors and materials from the next series of slides. This one is really talking about those porches. Sometimes it's a single floor, sometimes it's two stories, but porches and columns that sort of punctuate that experience and really tie and anchor buildings to the landscape, create that welcoming environment. And finally, wood lap siding, board and batten siding in a few key kind of accent locations, wood shake shingles that are everywhere. We also were particularly drawn to some of the brick expressions, so obviously in foundations and in ground plane interventions, but also in these beautiful pierced brick garden walls, they were just especially evocative to us. And just to understand a little bit, this is a glimpse at the architecture that we arrived at at the bottom, right? The visitor's center is the building that's shown on the left in this illustration, and it is almost a one-to-one relationship with the department store building. So its height, its width is almost identical. So from a scale standpoint, we believe that the visitor's center is very much in relationship scale-wise to the village. And the test center is a little bit larger, and just for reference, it extends a little larger than in width than the Holly Inn, but across its predominant facade, it's a little shorter. So it has a very similar kind of look and feel in scale as the Holly, and then you can also see kind of projected up at the top there how it's much smaller than the Carolina Hotel. It fits within the two sort of outer flanking masses of the Carolina, and it's obviously a lot shorter. And we have a couple of new sort of artist renderings to share of the architectural expression that we've arrived at. The building on the right is the welcome center and museum, the building on the left is the test center and administrative offices. Building on the right hearkens a little more directly to the 1903 clubhouse, and the building on the left is inspired a lot by village precedents, but also the Carolina Hotel. And moving around to that pollinator garden space between the buildings, we see this as just a really key experiential feature for the visitors to really interface and understand the USGA's mission, and we hope that it is wonderful and inviting in a place that Pinehurst residents want to visit as much as visitors.
Thank you, Brandy. I'm going to now walk through the conditional district zoning and the proposal, and walkthrough conditions, and a little more detail on the site plan as we go forward. I'm going to be pointing quite a bit, so I'm just a pointer, but... So as Alex mentioned, and Brandy also, the location of the golf house, which we know located here, but how it fits in with the overall village, and the parcel that is being discussed for the rezoning is actually the entirety of the parcel, but it's really the 6.29 acre parcel that would have the VMUCD attached. This is an aerial photograph of the existing site. Brandy did mention the location and how important it is to locate the building where we could save as many trees as possible. we could save as many trees as possible. So this really illustrates the location of the tennis courts, the gravel parking lot, the informal parking lot that's on this side of the tennis courts, and then also the existing shuttle lot that's located here. You can see how many nice pine trees there are here and surrounding the site. And again, we're really working toward saving as many of those as we possibly can. Existing zoning, as Alex mentioned, this is the hotel conditional district that was recently approved by village council. This area is zoned recreation development with some hotel and some office professional. Proposed zoning for the VMU district is specifically designated for this area and would only apply to that specific area of the 6.29 acres. This is, again, Cherokee Road and the roundabout, and then this is Beulah Hill, and then the railroad follows directly here with the trestle bridge being located right in this location. So there's a lot of steep topography here. This map actually is existing conditions in a little more detail. You can see the tennis courts, the parking area for the shuttles, and then the informal parking area. This plan also shows the connection that is existing between the existing shuttle lot and the existing large main lot at the village, or at the resort. You can see Carolina Vista coming down and connecting back this way. In addition, there is an existing sewer utility line that's a service line that runs across here and was installed during the pool discussion, and we'll talk more about utilities in a few minutes. And then there's also a stormwater line that runs from the women's exchange, comes this way, comes down to a small stormwater basin that connects here to another pipe that runs across the, underneath the railroad and across Highway 5. So those are the items that are located here. In addition, you can see the connection where the connection to the shuttle lot comes out on Cherokee Road. Now, this area, you can see the very tight topography lines here, so it's very steep through here as you go toward the railroad trestle. And then also, until you get right about here, it's really steep coming out this way. Looking at the site plan as a whole, I'll come in from Carolina Vista, I'm coming in from the roundabout, come down Carolina Vista, there's a small drop-off area located here, and that aligns with the loop connection at the ellipse on Carolina Vista. This would lead to an entry plaza located here that would ultimately enter into the museum and visitor's center on this side, and then into the testing center and administration building on this side. So this is the connection back to the pollinator garden and back into this area. And Alex mentioned the greenhouse earlier. The greenhouse would be located here and be a focal point of the garden and really create a nice sort of folly in the landscape, if you will, along that corridor. Coming up in this direction, the parking would begin. That parking, again, as Brandy mentioned, is, it drops as far as we could drop it to get back and grade and sort of screen it and hide it with the buildings and with the landscape. It drops down quite a bit from the building elevation. Parking here would be, there's some golf cart parking here, and then ADA accessibility, accessible parking located here, and then these are vehicular spaces. We stopped the vehicular spaces here in order to keep this view clear and clean for the pollinator garden and those views coming across, so there weren't a lot of cars parked here in front of that area. There's also a small drop-off located here that could be used for drop-offs and deliveries for the visitor's center and any type of catering or event setup that would occur in the museum and the facilities here. Coming out on the Cherokee Road, we've been working with NC DOT and would be a right-in, right-out only at this location. So there will be no left turns entering in. So if you're coming down Cherokee, you could not take a left into this area. If you're coming from Highway 5, you could take a right in. But if you're leaving the facility, you can only go toward the roundabout. There will be no ability to make that connection back. It's a really, it's existing now, and it's really pretty unsafe, so this would make that a much safer condition. As Alex mentioned, we're working with NC DOT. There is nothing finalized at this point related to the turn lane. We're working on the length and the type of turn lane that would be there, but trying to make that condition as safe as we possibly can coming in and out of that location. The right-in, right-out, I think, will dramatically help the safety level of that intersection. And we feel like this intersection will be more used by employees, much more by employees than the intersection, the entrance here. I feel like most visitors to the site will be coming in Carolina Vista and coming parking, and then probably coming back out Carolina Vista and tying back. This parking lot entrance is aligned directly with the other side of the ellipse, so circulation can flow easily around. It's important to have this second connection for emergency services, just making sure that if something happens at Carolina Vista and there's a fire or something happening at the resort and the clubhouse, that there's a secondary access that connects back to parking and connect back. So it's an important emergency service connection as well. And we have, as you can see here, we've connected the parking lot that's really the existing location roughly of the existing connection. It will be improved. We like the location, though, because we can save as many trees. We don't have to cut down any trees to add that connection, so. Also, on the building, you see on this side of the building is the service court and the service area for any mechanical equipment, dumpsters, all of those things, delivery area for any type of large equipment that would be utilized in the testing center. That is screened. There's a large brick wall there that would screen all of that equipment. And the HPC approval, one of the conditions of that approval was that the walls will be of such a height to screen and cover any equipment that would be located within that. So if there's a 10-foot-high piece of equipment, there'll be a 10-foot-high wall to cover any of those things. And again, it's really tucked back in this corner. There's some stormwater here, and there'll be really nice landscaping around that as well. So again, trying to block those views from Carolina Vista where it would be visible. Looking at the pathways and the connections, the pathways, coming down Carolina Vista, there's an existing brick sidewalk, and that would be maintained and modified as necessary to come down Carolina Vista Drive. And then the pathways within the site plan, we're proposing to be more of a soft path, whether it be a crushed granite path, sort of like the greenway trails, something along that line, or a structured sand path, something where you would infuse sand with concrete and create a very stabilized path. And the idea is that that really hearkens back to the original paths that were in the village and even some of the pathways that you see today within the village around, really making that very soft, making it a pleasant walking experience, and really the ability to create this garden effect as you're walking into the facility. That would carry, those type paths would also carry into the pollinator garden and just make it a real garden experience. So that is a lot of the site plan. Also, looking at signage and talking about signage, we're proposing a sort of a freestanding sign here for the USGA, another sign, directional sign that will be located here, and then some building-mounted signage that would be on the building. There'd also be some directional signage and wayfinding signage within the facility so people could find their way around within the facility. This is the utilities plan, and I'm actually going to invite Tim Carpenter with LKC to walk through the utility concept for the plan.
Nice to be here again. Can everybody hear me? So as Bob was saying, most of the utilities needed for the site are actually located on-site. We have been going through with TRC as well as Moore County Public Utilities as far as water and sewer capacities to the building. Bob was describing the existing sewer line that ran through the site and crosses over on Highway 5. That currently is a private sewer service that was built back when the resort pool was done, up to the point where it's labeled and dashed in red. Everything to the west of that is intended to be, is converted to public. We've had that conversation and gone through that with Moore County Public Utilities, understanding that crossing Highway 5, there is a little bit of a bottleneck there, we're going to have to cross Highway 5 with an actual gravity sewer main, upgrade, we'll call it, to tie into the existing mains on the west side of 5. So everything back to the east then would remain a private sewer service to the resort. Water mains on-site, they're kind of show up there a little bit purple, I think. So we would come up from the south, there's an existing eight-inch main that runs kind of in the east-west direction that also belongs to Moore County Public Utilities. There is most likely going to be an upgrade of the railroad crossing and also the crossing on Highway 5 to upgrade that service. It was, as we got through with the subsurface utility engineering investigation, we found that to be a six-inch line. The county has modeled it, they have, even with that size, they have good flow and good pressure. But we feel like a comment going, well, it's already been a preliminary comment through TRC and a comment as we go through site plan, we'll need to upgrade that line. So really, the service, and then we will extend north to the building site, east and west and north into the mechanical rooms for fire protection and domestic services. The village fire department has reviewed our water line layout, and at this point, they have been satisfied with that. Stormwater, you'll see in kind of a green color there. So those are conveyance measures that will go down to two detention basins on the south side of the parking lot. So understanding, as Bob mentioned and Brandy mentioned earlier, the placement of the two buildings, one of them being on the tennis court with existing impervious surface and as well as the existing parking lot, those make up, those two surfaces make up about two acres, so our incremental increase to impervious surface is pretty small, but we are prepared to address the 25-year storm. We did that with the resort lodge, if some of you may recall. So understanding that, also coming out of TRC, that the trestle has, I guess, continued to be some problem in really heavy events, so we want to retain as much of that stormwater on-site as possible. We're also in a high-quality watershed, so we'll have a treatment component to all of our stormwater as well. But we are prepared to address the 25-year storm. I believe that's it on the utility side. And the capacity-wise, we had been in some discussion with Brandy Gould about that, they have adequate facilities downstream to pick up and transmit the water and wastewater.
Looking at the overall site information in the VMU district, and Alex actually covered a lot of this, the site is 6.29 acres. It's roughly 45,000 square feet in two buildings, and the setbacks that we're proposing are roughly equivalent to the office professional zoning district with 25, 15, 20, and 20. We actually exceed those by a significant amount in all locations on the plan. We just wanted to set a standard there. I'm looking at the plan now, and the front corner of the building is over 80 feet. It's 60 feet away from Cherokee Road, so there's a lot of distance there beyond those setbacks, but we thought it was appropriate to follow the office professional standard. In the VMU district, that zero to 10-foot is a maximum, so the buildings have to be between zero and 10 feet from the roadway. We're asking for a condition to modify that because we don't think that's really appropriate for that location and will cause us to take down a lot of trees and destroy the pine grove. So we'd like to have these enlarged setbacks for the facility. Looking at the maximum building height, it's 50 feet, and these buildings will be well below that permissible building height for the VMU district. The generation study was completed, and the endangered species, as Alex mentioned, was completed, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife has concurred. I'm going to walk through the conditions a little bit in a little more detail. As Alex mentioned, the first three conditions are all really to clarify uses within the PDO that aren't necessarily there and weren't really contemplated. The golf equipment research, development, and testing center, I'm not sure there are many of those that anyone would ultimately call for something in a UDO. So probably only one or two of those. But just to clarify that language in the UDO, in the PDO. And then looking at the setbacks, again, we had that information in the previous slide. Signage, we are requesting the increase by 50% on the sides of the signage. I have a diagram, and there was a diagram included in the application information on L-2.0, so we're asking for that as well. And then, as, yeah, double-handed here. But looking at the sidewalk condition, as Alex mentioned, I think as of right now, we're asking for relief from placing the sidewalk along Cherokee Road. And a big part of that is the reason the village is working through a multimodal plan now for sidewalks and pedestrians and just circulation around the village in a multimodal plan. And it's not very well-defined what exactly, what type of path would be located there. And we're also trying to work through something that would be extremely safe, as Alex mentioned, somehow trying to get back across the railroad and across Highway 5 with the bottleneck being the trestle bridge. And I think the USGA is very willing to work with the village in any capacity to create a plan that works for everyone. It's something that they would like to have additional pedestrians and be connected to that pedestrian network, hoping for a lot of walk-in traffic. So I think it's something that they're committed to and have to work through the wording of the language to figure that out and how it would work. But there's definitely a commitment on the USGA's part to make that all work. The parking spaces, and I'll walk through this in a little more detail as well. Now, there was a, my parking analysis completed by Kimley Horn that recommended 73 parking spaces at the peak hour. The PDO would recommend 127, but again, that doesn't, as Alex mentioned, doesn't include the golf, that includes Golf Equipment Research Development and Testing Center counted at a general office number. So actually, I've got a little more detail on a slide that I'll go ahead and move to that in a second. And then there is the parking surface condition of number eight. And what we're requesting, and the reason we're asking for a condition to define that information is because of the discrepancy Alex mentioned, and also wanting to have the ability to work with a product, something that's a little more sustainable or maybe has a little different look, a little softer look, a little more of a garden-type look that would fit the USGA's mission and the sustainable initiatives. So we're asking for that, but asphalt is a baseline for that discussion, but we're talking about, you know, a possibility of doing something a little bit different. And the good reference would be the Village Green, the Tus Memorial Park parking lot and the gravel that's there. So this is a little diagram of the signage, and it shows what the existing sign area would be in red and what the actual increase would be to that signage. So there's still, in the village's mixed-use district, the signs are still pretty small, especially for a facility like the USGA. Existing parking, I'll talk about the parking conditions a little bit. The existing parking on the site is the overflow and employee parking here, and then shuttle parking located on this side. As Alex mentioned, condition number nine of the lodge at Pinehurst approval calls for 100 parking spaces to be located on the greenhouse lot, which is owned by the Pinehurst Resort. And that parking must be completed by July 1st, 2022. So displacement of that parking, this parking would be ready to go, or there will be an alternative to parking, so when the USGA is ready to begin construction, this parking would be relocated in some fashion. It would be relocated to this area. So that was part of the lodge approval. So that parking, when the USGA is ready to go, there won't be any parking demand here. It will be shifted off campus already. As I mentioned, the PDO actually requires 127 spaces, and that includes the testing center. As Alex explained, the employees in the testing center are the same employees that are in the administration office. There aren't any specific offices in the lower level. All of those employees are accommodated in the 50 spaces on the first floor, or on the second floor of the facility, so their offices are located there. So their offices are located there, but they don't, they don't have any offices. They, they move up and down. So their, their parking is accounted for. With that, the Kimley Horn study recommended 73 spaces based on peak use at any one time. And it's a pretty conservative number as well. It's estimating 300 visitors to the museum on a daily basis, which would be wonderful. So, but is a, a projection of how many visitors may be there. And I think if, if you have questions related to that, I think Rand could offer some additional information on the number of visitors they see at Liberty Corner and, and some historic data. So if you have questions related to that. And then the USGA plans to propose is, this plan has 109 parking spaces total with 100 vehicular spaces, six golf cart spaces, and then bike racks that are located in this area, totaling again 109 parking spaces for the facility. So that's roughly, you know, that's 26 additional, is it 26 or 36? It's 36. 30. Matt, I'm a landscaper architect, but, so that's an extra 36 parking spaces that would be located on the facility above and beyond what would be required based on the Kimley Horn study. And it's also in excess, if you remove the, the testing facility from the numbers, it's 98, so it's still in excess of what would be required by the PDO with the reduction based on no one really working in, well, they work there, but they're not, they have offices in the above. So that, that concludes our presentation, and we'll be around to answer any questions. John, do you have anything additional?
Do any of you all have any questions of any of the presenters?
Thank you for your presentation very much. Very much appreciated. Thank you for the detail and the vision that you provided us as a board. We really appreciate that. So let's go ahead and start again from my far right with Paul. Any questions? And let's go ahead and go around to my far left. Is everybody prepared to do that? Paul, you prepared to start?
Give it a try.
If not, we'll, we'll put David on the hot seat. So you guys flip a coin.
Couple of questions, sir. When you're all filled out, your FOC, what's the number of employees, daily employees you think you'll have there? I mean, obviously, you have that because you have your parking spaces for them.
We're planning for about 50 full-time employees. That's our commitment to the state of North Carolina with the funding that came from the state was 50 full-time positions, so we'll satisfy that. Brandon, I think we've got, and then we have some hoteling stations if there's out of, you know, out of town, folks coming down from New Jersey. So I think we've got 56 workstations currently in the design for the second floor.
Okay, thank you. In the material that was provided, I think the stormwater management plan was for a 10-year event. Mr. Carpenter briefed a 25-year event. Is it 10 or 25? And if it's 25, are we going to change that?
Yes, we'll change that.
Okay, so it's 25?
Yes, it'll be a commitment to the 25-year.
Okay, asking an exception for the parking lot service, or surface, excuse me, but we don't know what the alternative is. Is there any, you know, do you have priority one, priority two, priority three, so we can kind of conceptualize it? Because obviously, it was a hang-up when it went to, through the TRC.
We, we don't necessarily have a specific idea of what it may be. We're asking for the flexibility to present a material to the village engineer that would meet the standards. Obviously, we would have to meet the standards of emergency service vehicles, which requires a 75,000-pound vehicle and being able to accommodate that. So an alternative surface that could still accommodate that, we, we would want to make sure from a technical standpoint, engineering standpoint, we could still accommodate everything necessary from an engineering standards manual. But the actual surfacing, we, we'd like to have a little bit of flexibility in that for aesthetics and, and for the sustainability initiatives of the USGA, if there's a different material.
Yeah, because as you know, in Pinehurst, when it gets busy, sometimes the surfaces on parking lots look like pine straw, and it's usually someone's yard.
That's right. That's right.
The, the front of the building looks great. That's what you're going to see from the clubhouse, the pool, you know, your visitors. What the majority of the people transiting through or, you know, from point-to-point Pinehurst is going to be the rear. The front is a horizontal lap. The rear is board and batten, vertical. What was the thought process as you designed the rear, you know, which is, appears to be much different in design and quality of materials than the front of the building, which I think majority of people, residents or visitors of Pinehurst, will see the rear of the building? What faces Highway five, Cherokee, and Mackenzie?
I have a couple of additional slides at the end. Are we are the way back at the beginning? Okay. Bear with me here. So moving around. So the intent is that the back is not treated radically differently. The board and batten, you can see in this particular slide, is actually located above. So there would be horizontal lap and then this sort of infill kind of panel at the porch level and board and batten at the top only. So, and that's the same sort of treatment as over here.
That's the front of the building, isn't it?
But, yeah, I don't know that I have the back clearly depicted. There it is. So you can see it there. So board and batten at the top, lap siding bottom.
Yeah, maybe it's just what was provided in the packet. It certainly looks different in design and quality from the front to the rear, and maybe that's just the, my interpretation or the pictures that were provided. Okay.
I can't speak to that, but I can say the intent is that the, there is a differentiation and a distinction between the type of siding material on the bottom. And as you move up the building, there's a transition. And that's, again, something that we found as a precedent in the village to help mitigate scale.
Okay, thank you.
So it's, it's not intended to change material or decrease in quality as you move around the building.
Then when, I did the math, and I could be wrong, I came up with 135 spots, parking spots, and I know I wasn't here a month ago when the parking, parking was such a discussion, but I, I had 40, 40,500 square foot in the material here. The number that was briefed differently as heated cold space was about 38,000, so it gave you a different number from 127 to 135, different of eight spots.
I think that's probably the porch difference, the exterior space.
A footprint versus heated space. So we, we have just a little over 40,000 square feet of, of conditioned space.
Okay, so the number for parking lots should be based upon 40,000, not a lower number, which would get you 127. Okay, got it. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
I was going to reference the square footage discrepancies, so we touched on it. But, yeah, there was three different totals, the 38, four, 40,000, five, and then the 45,000 that was referenced in the recent presentation. So we touched on it. Sonia?
Yeah. Why are you so objecting to the sidewalk there? Sorry. Why are you so objecting to the sidewalk there?
It, we're only objecting to it in the fact that right now, until the multimodal path is determined and, and what it is, really would hate to build something that's a five-foot brick sidewalk just to learn six months from now that it's an eight-foot wide trail that needs to go, go in that location. And that's, that's really what it's, it's about, is it's, let's figure out exactly what it wants to be and where it wants to go. That's a very dangerous intersection, and there's nothing for that sidewalk to connect to now. We'd like to reserve the, the decision on what that trail is until such time as the village has time to work out what that trail wants to be.
Topographically, and I'm pointing against, I apologize, there is a berm that exists along Cherokee Road here. So kind of starting just past the traffic circle, coming all the way down to this tie-in to our driveway connection, it's a wonderful kind of screening element that helps buffer the property from the traffic, but there's also a lot of trees there. And so cutting across right there would entail taking down a lot of trees and leveling out an area that we think is kind of key to the proper functioning of, of these spaces.
And the, and the thought is to provide the easement there to make sure that, that there's, you know, that the village can do something in conjunction with the USGA and the resort where we may be able to weave that trail in between the trees and not have to take down trees in that location. So that's, that's really why we're, we're looking at it as opposed to just going out with the grade, existing grade situation, and just putting in a straight sidewalk and, making it more integrated into the facility long-term.
That, also though, from the railroad track to Cherokee, a big washout. And maybe, I'm not in the same area, but there's a big washout there. So it needs to be addressed, not just with your pipes, but, I mean, you can see that hill. And, and the water is underneath, and a lot of times, there's water sitting there when there's terrible rains and cars literally flood there.
But I, I think some of that will be addressed by the stormwater on the site. Right now, there's a lot of impervious surface on the site that's just sheet flowing that way. So you have, you know, the existing parking lot in this location that just really sheet flows in that direction. There are some, a little berm there that, that does help direct some of that water. And then the tennis courts are just sheet flowing off. In this scenario, the water is, is controlled. So that stormwater is controlled. This parking area will have a reverse crown, so the drains will be in the middle of the parking lot. So that water will be being pitched back into the site rather than being pitched out toward Highway five. So, so this, this parking area on this edge will pitch back to the center of the parking lot, which really starts to really start to address those issues. And then it's piped, and it will be piped into these stormwater basins as opposed to, to going out onto Highway five where it's not, not as controlled today. There'll be a lot more control of what's happening there with this plan, when this plan goes into place.
I agree with Paul about the backside. I'm not happy with that from the pictures that we've gotten. Even that gate is so commercial-looking. It really bothers me. It's not Pinehurst. I've been here for 60-plus years, and it just doesn't look like Pinehurst to me. It looks more like a Fort Bragg. Barracks in the back. I mean, just being honest.
Sure. And that gate happens in this location right here. So it's really something that's completely screened. So the, the hillside here, one, one thing we didn't really talk about a whole lot is the grade change. I mean, you mentioned it a little bit because of the hill washing out. But this area of the site is significantly higher than, than Beulah Hill Road. And you really, even from, you, you have to get further down Beulah Hill Road even than our plan shows to even be able to see any of the backside. And then there's that existing building that's there and some dumpsters and some other kind of service things here now. So we were trying to locate the service pieces of the building in as, in the least visible location as possible and, and really trying to be mindful of what you do see from Beulah Hill Road.
And there are required buffers along the edge here. And the intent is to plant additional pine trees and, and start to restore the pine grove, not just in this location, but all the way around the site. So we think that area will be heavily screened, and we'll plant around the backside of that as well. So if you're thinking about view lines, there's a view line coming from here, and there'll be a view line coming from somewhere down here.
That's right.
Coming up, but there's a lot of vegetation between here and the back of that.
And a lot of grade.
And the grade, yeah. There's a lot of grade transition there as well. So I, I don't think that gate will really be.
I don't think you'll see the gate at all. Like, you have to be behind the building, coming around that parking to, to see it.
I was looking at the, when you compared the testing center and administration building to the Holly Inn, you said it's almost the same size. Well, according to these things, the Holly Inn is 115 and the testing center is 152. That's quite a big gap there in the size.
It's less than 40 feet difference. But, but still, in, in scale, the, the intent of that portion was to show that it's significantly smaller than the Carolina. It's a little larger proportionally than the Holly.
Is any of this water going to affect, when you were talking about the basin by the women's, because we get flooded out there, and we have to pay for it, and we have to raise the money for that. So I'm a bit concerned about, nobody's addressed that. The women are very upset. That's a very historical place. I mean, I used to bake cakes for them when I was a kid, so to me, it's a real fear to the heart, and I don't want to see us spending more and putting sandbags up and et cetera. So how are we going to address that?
This, this plan really won't affect the women's exchange. All of the topography from the site flows back to this corner. Topography, except for what is here and, and comes back down to the railroad and out to Highway five here. But the rest of the site flows this way and flows from this direction and collects here. The women's exchange, the, the stormwater pipe comes across here, and that, this is the stormwater pipe that was installed for the small basin near the women's exchange. And that pipe will come, continue, we're, we're not going to relocate, we're not going to impact that pipe at all. We are going over it, but it's, it's at such a depth that it won't be a, a conflict. And then that pipe comes down to a stormwater basin that is located here just off of the property that we're, we're zoning. And then that discharges out across Highway five. So what we're doing is collecting all of our stormwater here, 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 potential for some rain garden and educational gardens in the educational area, and then connecting those together. And then those connect to, they do connect to the pipe, but it's after the stormwater basins that are for the women's exchange. It connects to the same pipe that goes across Highway five. So all the water is flowing this direction, and we're just connecting to a manhole in the pipe there. So all the water will flow, won't have any impact, none, none of the water will flow toward the women's exchange. And we understand the, the conditions there. It's, it's a very low spot in the village.
Other questions, please? The tennis courts are being displaced. Have you talked with the club about replacing those for the members, or are we just taking them away and saying, this is more important? I mean, not everybody in Pinehurst plays golf.
I, I think the resort is working through plans and, and doing studies related to tennis and what will happen and occur with tennis in the future. I know Dick Higginbotham is here with the resort if, if you had any additional questions. But I, I think they're working through plans right now, and that was part of the discussion during the lodge, because we did talk about these six courses, or six courts that are, that are being removed. So they're working through plans within internally to replace any tennis or, or whatever, to right-size tennis. So, yes.
Away from the resort, probably, driving there or something. Sure. And I know that's not your fault, but people are looking at the USGA displacing members' privileges that we pay for. Signage, I don't agree with doing bigger signs. We've already done this with the resort on the manor. Are we going to keep increasing everybody's signs? I mean, everybody's going to know this is the USGA buildings. I mean, I don't think that's going to be a question. They're not miniature huts, so to speak. They're big buildings. Anybody that plays golf is going to know, and any visitors, I'm sure the hotel and the resort will promote it. So I just don't understand why you need to come in and do big signs. And I don't care if there's a third bigger. That's why we have standards to follow. We are a historic village. We're not trying to be a city of golf.
To piggyback on that, could I ask you, Alex, to bring up the graph that has the request for the signage? I have this in my notes too, Sonia, so if we can. Thank you.
Do you want to see the table that I prepared or the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sonia, do you mind if I jump in on the sign issue?
Yeah, please do. Please do, because I'm watching that drawing we saw.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, hi. On the, the plan that you all showed us, there were three signs in particular that you had as graphics. You showed us the locations, and then also the schematic that gave us an idea about what the size is in scale, which I appreciate because it's really helpful to have that. Looking at the table here that Alex is presenting, I'm seeing some signs contemplated where you're asking for an increase in size that are not indicated on the plans that you presented to us. So, for example, awning and canopy signs. Could Could you please walk us through specifically where you contemplate signage? And, you know, for example, on wall signs, we, we know that you can have one per street frontage. You've got two buildings, so that's potentially eight signs. Exactly where are we going? If you can be a little more specific.
Would it be helpful to put the drawing up for everybody to look at?
Sure.
Alex, I'm sorry to ask you to.
I know, Alex.
But thank you for doing it. All right. So let me, there it is. Great. Okay. And the pointer. Sorry. All right. So, and actually, can you zoom so that I can point on the site plan? I apologize. Like zoom out. Sorry. Just a little, because I want to get that north corner where, okay. So there is a sign contemplated just a little further north off of the page. So there is a sort of monument sign, right? Contemplated for here. And it's just something to kind of mark the corner to, to be that kind of.
Now, is that the large sign we see the gal standing next to? And it's, you know, like maybe a, if she's taller than me, that's, you know, a sign that's like five and a half feet tall.
And there's, there's two orientations that you're seeing there. It's sort of like, without committing to the specific sign design yet, it could be a more horizontally oriented sign, which is what's kind of shown to the left.
I see.
And then it could be slightly taller and more compressed, which is what's shown on the right.
Gotcha.
If, if I were to anticipate, it would be a more rectilinear sign?
I think that's a good choice.
Okay.
And the maximum height in, in the VMU district for a, a sign is five feet. So that would be the maximum height. And I'd see it more as, right?
All right. And then the other two places that we are contemplating signs is on the building. So we're not exactly sure, but somewhere kind of here and somewhere kind of here that, that wants to announce, you know, USGA on the building. We're not contemplating putting building signage here or here or here or here. So the intent is for two of those and that would be a maximum.
Okay. So you're not, despite the fact that what we're seeing in our packet calls for canopy signs and signs on glass and signs on four sides of a building, that, that's really not where you're driving this.
That's not the intent. The, the intent, I think, is to provide some flexibility as we get into the sign design. But I, and I think I'll let you speak to kind of your vision for the overall kind of sign approach. But I think ultimately it's to be respectful, right? We've, we've worked really hard to be respectful with architecture and we want the signage to be respectful too. So it would not be signs on every frontage, billboards, you know, advertising USGA. It would be in a few key orchestrated moments.
Just to reiterate what Brandy was sharing, we're not a billboard organization. And I think that signs on the buildings are really to differentiate if you're a visitor coming to campus and standing by the flagpole, which is the welcome center and which is the test center or administration building. So some pretty modest and very simple signs that would just really identify the building. We have very, just trying to think what's in Liberty Corner. We have a, we have a, we have a sign at the edge of the road, which is horizontal and low, which is very much, I think, in keeping with the brand of the organization and sort of, we think about the shape, the form of the golf course. Low and horizontal is a lot of our signage and we have a very simple stainless steel letters right by the front door that's not even visible from the parking lot. You have to be up on the front porch and they're on a lateral wall. So we're traditionally very understated with our signage. And I think certainly out of respect for what the village represents, but really respectful of the USGA brand, there's not going to be large loud signs. There're not going to be lit signs, neon signs. It'll be very simple, understated, elegant signs that I think are, are in keeping with the architecture and the brand of the organization.
And going forward, it's certainly not my intention to try to force you all into a box and make decisions in this meeting that are best made going forward and working in conjunction with planning and architects. But I do think, just looking at that table, it, it's, it's a little overwhelming, the, the potential if carte blanche is given. So I know my inclination would be to hone that down a, a bit to make sure that we're all on the same page, if not, you know.
I think we could certainly condition which specific signs would be a 50% increase in size and, and hold it to wall-mounted signs and that freestanding. I think we could certainly do that because I don't think there's any intent. I don't think there are any awnings on the building or anything like that. So we could certainly pare that down. I think that, that would make a lot of sense and, and clean it up a little bit.
Thank you. Sonia, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, if, if I could interject, just, just to clarify that the intent of that table that was provided by staff, it was to, to, to give that picture absent of having the discussion between the design team and the, and the planning zoning board, much like we did the last time we had a conditional zoning request.
Right. No, and I appreciate that, to make us sure that we're aware of the possibilities, should we not be a little specific in what, you know, to make sure that we're all on the same page. So I, no, I appreciate that.
I think I've done my job, I hope, and we welcome you to Pinehurst.
Back to you.
Okay. So thanks for addressing signage. Cross that off. Next thing, I was wondering about the handicap parking. I see that laid out over here, yes. One of my questions about that is in relation to the visitor center, that's a hike. Is there any handicap parking that's contemplated closer to the visitor center? I assume there isn't, you know, like a shuttle running anywhere here. Any thoughts about that?
Okay, certainly. Certainly, the, I, this, the way the ADA, the parking is located here is very similar to Liberty Corner. And the goal is really to have an experience and, and have anyone that, that visits the, the facility have the same experience. So we anticipate that the walk from, from this area of the site, from the visit, this is mostly the visitor parking area. Anyone leaving that, that area would experience a very well landscaped, very nice garden. And we'd like to have everyone experience the same, same thing. We meet the ADA guidelines for distance. So, and based on the parking. So we'd like to have that same experience for all visitors because we, we really think it will be a wonderful walk and a wonderful trail and experience getting into the facility.
Unless you're my 85-year-old mother, will not be a wonderful walk.
Well, it, well, there's also the, the drop-off loop located here, which would be.
And at the back, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
And in this location. So you could very easily, if someone needed special assistance, they, they could come to this location, drop off and, and park and, and come back and meet. Or, or around the back and, and come back, either way.
Yeah. And I'm, you know, I'm not going to second guess the ADA. If that's ADA compliant, so be it. Just wanted to make sure that that was something that folks, you know, were thinking about and considering. Looking at, thank you for, so, thank you Sonia for mentioning, bringing up the water controls and the flooding, because as you know, under that trestle bridge, so I'm really pleased to hear that that was thoughtfully considered in the way you were looking at the birmingham and that back parking lot. With the permeable alternative materials that are contemplated there, I'm really intrigued. How does that work with the, the grading down and the, I don't know if it's grading with a T that you have there for the water to move on out? How, how does that work?
It's, it's actually grading with a D.
Okay.
But, and it's, but it would work exactly the same way. The only challenge, the only difference would be that the water would, would go down through the pavement and be captured and it, it would follow in the same pipes and the same alternatives and, and into the same basins because it would all be channelized there as well. But it's, it's something that, it does allow some of the water to penetrate and it's, those permeable surfaces could be an alternative at that location.
And it's, I, I might have misunderstood. Were you contemplating wanting to, if you received the approval, of using that surface for the entire parking lot area?
I don't think it's even determined, right? Like I think the, the initiative and the goal of, of asking and sort of reserving the, the right to explore it further is just to see how far we can push the sustainability initiative of it. So ideally, we would like to, to reserve the right to consider it for the whole parking area. But in, in practicality, as we dive into it, you know, it, it will come into a much more focused area, I suspect.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, construction traffic and coordination with the lodge. Could you touch upon that? You know, as, as you've heard from everyone, traffic concerns there at that intersection are a real thing. I think that right in, right out is fabulous and is going to be necessary and is very smart. But what are you thinking about for staging construct, construction? And can you talk to us a little bit about timelines for construction vis-à-vis timelines at the lodge? If that's an appropriate conversation at this time.
Okay. With you, we'll call up Janae. With Gilbane, we've got a representative.
Absolutely.
Are you comfortable standing or do you want to sit? Okay.
Can you go down, Alex? Keep going. And if you need to point?
How much further down does Alex need to go?
Uh, keep going, Alex. Keep going. That one right there.
So just past the white slide.
Slide 45.
That one.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me okay?
This is great. Y'all were saving the best for last.
I always say we're the, the in-laws that come to visit. You're happy to see us come, but more excited to see us go. Did I go the wrong way? Okay. There we go. So to answer your original question about the construction with the lodge, the lodge would start, if you can see here, early 2022 with an 18-month duration. And then the golf house would be mid-2022 with a 14-month duration. So definitely overlapping with that, with the lodge starting first. More as you spoke about, you can see the lodge is located down here. If we were going plan south, USGA here. So coming off of Cherokee and then using this central location where the existing shuttles would have set or are sitting now to allow the construction flow through both through both projects at the same time. It would obviously be construction fencing around here to screen as the project is going on. With the phasing of the projects, we think that this is key because it allows, one, consolidation for construction. So it's not mobilization and then another mobilization for the project. So you, when all in all, it's 18 months total that we would be there as opposed to breaking the projects down. Construction traffic, again, keeping everything off of Carolina Vista, that is like a no-fly zone, would come in down through here, be able to share that entrance with the lodge. I'm sorry, I didn't let you know I was pointing.
Oh, no, no, no. I figured.
That's okay. Yeah. And then come right back out again. So again, making that right-hand turn only, right-hand in, right-hand out. In regards to the staging, I believe you asked, one of the possibilities for staging as far as material is to use, we've actually contacted the Aberdeen, Carolina and Western Railway to bring in some of the construction materials through the rail yard. So they do have a staging area where we can load materials. We've spoken to our, some of our steel contractors and drywall contractors. They've done this several times. They will be able to use that to bring in material which will help with staging and trucks and things coming off of that turn. Because as you said, that is a heavily utilized area. Also with the pedestrian walkway there, it is a very dangerous turn and it does need to be widened. So being able to have the possibility to use that to store materials and to bring things in would be key to the construction. Did that answer your original question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. And it's the first time I've heard about utilizing the railway, which I think is a fantastic idea personally. Okay, thank you. Does any, before I go on, does anyone else on the board have any questions for this particular expert? Okay, great. Thanks. And then one last question for myself, or really more of a statement about that sidewalk. As I recall, and y'all correct me, help me out on this, I do not believe on that side of the road, there is a crosswalk going across five. I believe the crosswalk is actually on the opposite side of five because of that left turn coming down Route two. So that makes me more comfortable with not having a sidewalk there because it is in an element without a crosswalk there going across five, a bit of a sidewalk to nowhere if it's built right now. And as I recall, there is a cross, excuse me, a sidewalk on the opposite side of Route two that feeds into the crosswalk across five. Is that correct?
I think there's a sidewalk.
You don't think there is?
There isn't one.
There's a sidewalk, but no crosswalk? There's no sidewalk on the opposite side of two coming down along the homes there?
There's no, no, in that corner, there's no sidewalk going towards the traffic circle.
Okay. Well.
That's why I was a little bit concerned, especially since we are trying to get trails. And even if eventually it would come behind their back.
Right.
You know, if they don't want to do it, and I meant to say this, maybe they could put a certain amount of money aside so that when the sidewalk is decided not to hold up their plans. We are trying to do sidewalks in the village.
Yes.
And that's very important.
Do a warranty bond or whatever it's called, shorty bond for that. So money's already set aside. Taxpayers don't have to pay for something that should have been done in the, during this plan.
Well, I think maintaining the easement is really important. And I like the idea of having flexibility in where, exactly the path that that sidewalk takes to respect trees, respect the berm. I do think that we do need a sidewalk heading down from the little traffic circle to five. I don't know that we need one on both sides of the road. You know, I thought there was one on the other side. Clearly I'm wrong. But, okay. Thank you. And that's it for me. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Julia. Matt?
Thank you as well for your presentation and your passion for the project. All of you appreciate it. Just a couple of questions. This was mentioned of the excitement of the home of the USGA looking at Pinehurst and the numbers that were mentioned from Paul's question about the full-time equivalence and the number of workstation in the facility. So are you anticipating growth? You know, are, are we gonna, I know 60 was the number that was used for the traffic analysis, which covers a little bit above, you know, your current workspace. But, I mean, do you anticipate growing once you move down here and other expansion? I mean, obviously you, you can put more workstations in a space if you have to sometimes to, than, than you do originally.
Look, at, at this point, given the functions that are moving, it would be at most incremental growth, low sort of single figures type growth that, you know, I think that we could foresee at this moment in time. The organization's actually been contracting in size recently. We were as large as 330 employees and we're down about 290 right now. So we're certainly not in a growth phase organizationally. And again, with the test center function here and the green section function, we just don't see a tremendous amount of growth in terms of staff count here. We're actually experiencing potentially growth with green section would actually be located around the country as opposed to here in Pinehurst. So again, there, there's, we've designed in growth in the, in the single-digit numbers. But right now, as a, as a leadership team, we're not really planning on growth, anything beyond that.
That's helpful. I appreciate it. So I know we, we've talked about signage, but one question, just to make sure I'm not missing anything. So the only sign currently proposed that is on Cherokee is the one at the traffic circle of Cherokee and Carolina Vista. So there's no other signage proposed on the road frontage of Cherokee?
That's correct. That's correct.
So Mr. Kuntz kind of. So Mr. Kuntz kind of referenced the use of the visitor center at Liberty Center and maybe by comparison. So is that something you could speak to? You know, the conservative approach of 300 visitors a day? How conservative is that?
Sure. So right now in Liberty Corner, we're drawing about 12,000 a year, which is more on the order of 40, 30 to 40 a day, our 100,000 number. So the 300 a day is roughly, we're looking at 110,000 visitors a year. The best comparable that we can come up with to get to that number is actually the visitor center at Pebble Beach. So Pebble Beach Resorts built a visitor center on their property a couple of years ago. They draw about 200 to 220,000 a year. They have 2.2 million visitors a year to the Monterey Peninsula. So that's about a 10% capture rate. Moore County is 1.1 million. So we're using that as our precedent in saying if we can have a 10% capture rate in the same way that Pebble Beach does, that is a pretty aggressive number for a golf museum and certainly for any sports museum. If we drew 100,000, we'd be thrilled. But that's what we sort of based the number on. It was the best precedent that we could sort of come up with, what we might, in a best-case scenario, be attracting here.
Okay, okay. That's good, good information. I appreciate that. So the Pine Grove area that's currently there and maybe is going to expand a little bit if I look at the existing compared to what's on the site plan, is there a plan to expand that towards Cherokee or at all, or Carolina Vista? Like basically into the road right of way? How far will it expand from what it is? Because right now, there is some room in the shoulder that's clear space between the edge of pavement and where the tree line is.
We intend to expand into the right of way. That would become a DOT, NC DOT issue, but definitely restoring the Pine Grove, you know, in, in this location in the front and then working to restore that all the way around the site as well and around these areas. So really trying to save and supplement.
Okay. But as far as you know, right now, the tree line just basically goes to the right of way?
Close, yeah, yeah. The grassed area out there is in the right of way.
Okay. So in your offering or discussion about the easement, is the intention with the easement in offering that to be able to put a sidewalk somewhere else through the property? And if so, have you thought about where that might be?
We haven't gotten there. I think first, we want to define what type of trail. And once we define that through the multimodal plan, then we would work with the village staff. And we've been having some discussions, some recent discussions about that and working toward the right circulation pattern and the right location and the right trail type. So I think there, we're a little ahead of the, ahead of the game at this point and just want to sort of work through that when the design is appropriate at such time. And I guess we have about three years to figure it out, or two years to figure it out. So hopefully, we can figure that out.
But the intent is that the USGA wants to partner with the village and accommodate that in an appropriate way.
Okay.
Absolutely. Golf is a walking game, so we love the idea of being connected by walking paths to the village and the community, so.
And I think ultimately, it's in the best interest of the project to do so. When you talk about that capture rate, if you can create this as a destination, there's a restaurant there, you know, a good place for even, you know, those of us who live in the village to, you know, you've got in-home guests, let's walk on over, have lunch, see the pollinator garden. You know, I think it just, it adds to that sense of place and makes it a destination for those of us who live here as well.
The greenhouse building that is noted on the general concept plan, is that literally planned to be a greenhouse?
That would be for, so for our turf grass research program. So we do, we do have a team, we largely outsource that. We work with land-grant universities around the country. We're the largest funder of turf grass research in the world. We have long partnership with NC State. But it, so it would be a place for researchers or staff or graduate students from the university or Sand Hills Community College. We would use it for turf grass breeding and turf grass research.
Okay. So I know, it's, go ahead.
I was just going to say, architecturally, it would have to be approved by the historic commission. So just keep in mind from a character standpoint that it's not, it will meet a certain standard, right, to be a showpiece on, on the USGA site.
And we don't have the funding for it in place right now, which is why we're not sort of progressing it. But we're going to look, as we continue to evolve that program here, we'll look for some donor support to build that facility down the road. But knowing that it's coming, just thought it would be wise to include it in the, in the site plan now.
Okay, so that, that kind of answers my next question, which is, staff has recommended it as a condition, but it wasn't in your applicant request for a condition on the zoning. And that's related to basically funding and it's not planned to be a part of the script?
It's funding issues.
Yeah, that's right. As to clean it up from a condition and PDO standpoint, just to make sure that it's in the specific and it's specified within the document.
Matt, can I jump in the report?
So just as staff has made the recommendation that we add a ninth condition, do you, would you be agreeable to that ninth condition to go ahead and firm up where the greenhouse is going to be located?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
And the main reason for that is to, to make sure it's part of this conditional zoning. So if later on down the road, if the funding is available, we wouldn't have to come back through a planning and zoning process again and go through public hearings to, just go through the HPC, make sure it's compatible and it's attractive and meets the HPC guidelines.
I think it makes a lot of sense for both sides. We just want to make sure that you would be agreeable to maybe tightening up firmly what you plan to do in the future. Sorry to jump on.
That's good. Okay, my last question, so on the impervious parking, so you mentioned sustainability. Is it the desire and intention of USGA to pursue some sort of sustainable building certification like LEED or other for the building or just kind of a general practice of sustainable design?
Well, I can start. I'll start and you can sort of piggyback on. So we have not historically with our buildings pursued LEED. All of our buildings are minimum LEED silver. We just don't think it's a good use of organizational resources to spend $150,000 for certification. We'd rather put that money into our research programs. So it's a core part of our, I mean, it's been part of our mission. The green section was 100 years old last year. We have invested heavily in sustainability and we do it through our research and our work as opposed to a seal or a certification on the building. It's just a strategic decision we've made, but we certainly talked about, you know, this building will be minimum LEED certified and probably beyond. And as we move forward in the planning process, we're going to be actually having some more intentional discussions about what those options are to pursue some alternate, alternate systems.
Yeah, so we have a special sustainability consultant that we've engaged to help us work through that. There's multiple rating systems beyond LEED that look at things like operational usages, waste, just how you run your facility that, so it goes beyond simply construction. So we're trying to pull sort of a quark and since it's across multiple rating systems to identify the sustainable initiatives that most align with the USGA's mission and that can help tell that story to the visitor. So the, again, the goal is that there is a very sustainable building in sight at the end of the day, but it's not necessarily bound to one system. And again, from a, from a financial standpoint, it's trying to meet the objectives without necessarily paying for the plaque to go on the wall.
Understood. Well, that does lead to a more question, actually. So on the stormwater design, I know we're at general conceptual plan, but in what has been done thus far, is that it's based on a semi-permeable pavement type runoff or, you know, because if we, if we say we're not going to go forward with a condition, obviously asphalt to greater runoff?
Actually, it has not been contemplated at this point. We've basically, like, it's a baseline of asphalt right now. So all the design, the stormwater design, everything we've contemplated to date is just based specifically on asphalt to date.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
One of the perks of going last is that most of my questions have already been answered. So thank you for that and thank you all for, for your answers. I am hesitant to get rid of the sidewalk condition. You know, I think the, the future of Pinehurst involves making it more walkable and just connectivity overall is something that needs to be addressed as we continue. I do appreciate the idea of the easement so that it's at least, you know, in place to be done at some point. I also don't think that burden should be passed on to the village and the taxpayers. I think it would be great to sort of lead by example. You know, the USGA is a big player for the area. If they have to do it, then any development in the future still has to adhere by those rules to some extent. So I'd like to see further consideration of what, what that easement would entail and how that path would, would, you know, take shape. I guess part of that would be, and I may have been misunderstanding this, but the parking of all the shuttles and employee parking, is that going up Highway 5 closer to the harness track?
That's correct.
Is there going to be any sort of shuttle system or anything to get those workers to the hotel or resort or wherever they may be going?
All of the shuttles would be relocated there, too. The shuttles and shuttle drivers would all be relocated to that area. So that, that would become a back and forth to the resort.
Okay.
Yes.
That was just one, one concern that I had. I guess would, so right now, I guess the sidewalk requirement is on Cherokee. Would it proceed to go up Highway 5 as well if it, if it were to go further?
Challenge with going on Highway 5, and that's one of the things we've been addressing with staff, is how to get around the railroad trussel. It's a pinch point and there's no room there to, to get a pedestrian connection. So one of the things we've been discussing is moving a trail more internal down Carolina Vista, connecting back to where the other railroad crossing is. We've talked about, you know, coming through the site and other things. And that's why we're asking for some flexibility in where we are. I'd hate to commit to something now and do something that just doesn't make any sense, you know, six months from now. So I think that's, that's where we are in, in working with, with the village staff to, to locate the most appropriate place.
That's all I got.
Thank you. So just a couple of questions from myself. Does the USGA currently have a testing center anywhere in the United States?
We do, in Liberty Corner, New Jersey. It's been there since the 1980s.
Since when?
1980s.
Since 1980s.
We built the facility mid-1980s.
Okay. Can you give us a little bit of idea of what happens there and what's going to happen with the space?
Sure. So as the game's governing body, one of our responsibilities is making sure that the equipment that's made by manufacturers conforms to the rules. It's about protecting the fundamental skill and challenge of the game. So we have in the rules of golf, there are regulations on golf balls and golf clubs, equipment specifications. The equipment manufacturers are required to submit golf balls for conformance testing every year. Club testing, conformances, conformance testing for clubs is optional. So those manufacturers send, send balls and clubs to us and we run them through a number of test procedures in the test centers simply to make sure they conform to the rules of golf. So we test for size, weight, symmetry, initial velocity, overall distance of a golf ball. And then there's standards just on performance of golf clubs, coefficient of restitutions, volume measures, things of that nature. So what we're doing there really is taking in equipment from manufacturers. You don't do any, we don't do any of our own equipment development. We're not a manufacturing company. We're literally just testing, sort of like a UL lab sort of testing facility. That, all of that function relocates here to Pinehurst and the facility that's in right now on the campus will be taken down.
And Rand's being a little modest with his description of the facility. There's some pretty cool stuff that happens in there. Part of the design of the test center is to put some of the more interesting to look at test equipment closer to the outside spaces so that from a window location, you could look in from the outside and see what's going on. There's a really cool robot arm that hits the ball. There's some air guns. There is some sort of more lab-like tabletop or benchtop type equipment, but, but it's a very interesting facility and there's an indoor test range. I mean, there's, there's pretty interesting things that happen in there.
Yeah, it sounds very interesting for sure. I think my, you've answered a lot of my, my current questions just from your definition and thank you. I think one of my concerns would have been a change of use in the space in the future, of course. And so the sustainability of your testing center in New Jersey speaks to that, I think, since the 1980s. So I don't think you, do you foresee any sort of change?
No, no. You would have to have a fundamental shift in the mission of the organization. So right now, we test equipment, our partners, the RNA, Royal, well, Royal and Ancient, they were the, they're now just the RNA. Okay, that's a whole branding issue of their own. They test for equipment that's produced outside the United States. We're responsible for testing all the equipment produced in the United States.
So you're moving that whole operation from New Jersey to Pinehurst?
Correct.
So this is going to be your only testing center?
That's correct.
So it's not like you'll have to compete against the two in five years?
Absolutely, nope. There will be, there's only a need for one and it will be here.
Have manufacturers coming to visit there to present as well? Is it in large groups? Can you give me an idea about the visitation to that area?
A lot of the major equipment manufacturers will come once a year, once every two years with a small group for discussions. A little more frequently, our staff will go to them. So we like to just understand what's going on in their production floors, their R and D functions, their facilities. We don't really have, can't think of, the last time we had a large meeting with manufacturers was in Vancouver, Canada, neutral territory. And that was 15 years ago. So it's not a regular occurrence that there's large meetings, but there'll be informal meetings with leadership or engineers that sort of go back and forth, groups of two, three, four, something of that nature. They have their own industry secrets, so they don't like to present in front of one another.
Sure.
So they're not coming, you know, collectively as a group. They're coming one seat, you know, one-off sort of conversations with us.
I can understand my, my thought process that in five or 10 years, all of a sudden we have a drastic use of the space, all of a sudden, we have a large area that was a testing center now attracting a large portion of people without the parking spaces.
Right.
So I appreciate that answer. Thank you. So can you, can Bob or somebody speak to the, the surface of the parking? You had mentioned that it's crowned and it kind of slopes inward in this case. Is that calculated at all in your stormwater runoff calculations at all? Do you get any sort of positive calculations for that?
It, it doesn't really change the calculations because it's the same amount of impervious surface. But it, what, what it does allow us to do, especially in this instance, is push the parking down a little bit and it allows us to get the grading in this, especially in this back area, the back area that you see where we, we're coming up to that high slope. It allows us to push that parking down a little bit further because of the way that we're angling it, rather than having to have it slope to one side or the other. And it, it doesn't really affect the overall runoff. It, it's more, we're doing it that way more for a grading issue and not allowing the water to escape over the, off of the side and down the hillside. So we want to collect that water and push it in toward the site rather than having it pushing out across.
So other than the material that the parking service would be made out of, you would meet all other PDO requirements I would probably imagine?
That's correct, yes.
I would assume.
Yes.
Totally.
It's, it's really just the surface. And again, we would have to meet the, the standards within the manuals for depth of pavement to handle and accommodate those 75,000-pound fire trucks and emergency services. Whatever we did, would have to go through geotechnical design and civil engineering design.
Thank you. So my last question, really, we need Alex's input here. When we talk about condition number nine that would be added on from staff recommendation, Alex, what kind of specifics would you need to be included in that condition to make that relevant to your world? And I want to make sure, ask this question with you so we can have this conversation.
And I, I think the recommended condition for, for us to administer long-term, I think it's there. That paired with the, the proposed location on the general concept plan. And really, as we stated earlier, all that is, is to, is to memorialize that and permit that specific location and that footprint. Nothing more, nothing less. Anything else will still have its checks and balances that it will need to, to meet and go through with whatever applicable codes and regulations will be in place at the time.
So footprint, general location, as far as verbiage, and that's still generic and specific enough at the same time, I think is? Okay. All right, that's the end of my questions. Thank you all again.
Break.
That's what, what I was going to say. We have not gotten to the public comment portion yet, but let's do that here.
Can I ask one more? I just remember seeing the bike spaces. Would there, if we want to, I guess, increase walkability as well, I think there's a lot of bikes in the, in the village as well. as well. Would that number be able to be increased? Would there be any other options for bike parking? Would you be willing to increase that number? I don't know what a good number would be, but.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So I'm going to suggest it's 6:10. Let's reconvene at 6:20 if everybody's agreeable to that. And we'll venture right into the public comment portion of this. Is that okay with everybody?
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much again for allowing us that break. I hope you all had some benefit as well. I want to address public comments first. We had no public comment sign up, but I do want to ask anybody in the crowd, do we have anybody from the public who would like to make a statement or comment? Hearing none and seeing none, we're going to continue this discussion. A little bit of something's come to light. When we start talking about our conditions inside of our own deliberation, I think two things have kind of come up with us. One being the sidewalk. So I think the current condition request from staff may be in lieu of sidewalk along Cherokee Road.
Jeremy, can I interject just real quick?
Please.
If we're, we don't have any public comment, I think we can go ahead. If you'd like to entertain a motion to, we go ahead and close the public hearing and get into deliberation if that's where we're, if that's what you're getting.
Correct.
If we do that, Alex, are we still able to engage in discourse with the applicant?
I think you're going to have to in order to, if there's going to be any revisions to the, to the conditions anyway, to get them to agree to them.
Right. So if we close a public hearing, are we still allowed to do that? Or do we need to remain in public hearing to have the conversation?
You don't have to remain in public hearing to talk with the applicant. That is for, to receive the public comment.
Fabulous.
Okay. So we can close the meeting. Okay. All right. So let's do that and get into our deliberation. Let me ask this question to the board real quick. Have we asked enough questions to come to a conclusion and a decision tonight? Or do we need, is there anything come up that we need to consider a continuation at all? Does everybody have enough information?
I'm satisfied.
With that, I'll ask for a motion to end the public hearing and enter back into our general meeting.
Move to end the public hearing and move back into our general meeting.
Second. All in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are back in our general meeting. So as we start to deliberate, I think one of the things that we want to do is go down each condition, discuss them as needed. If we need to get into an individual conversation of going around the horn, we definitely will do that. But I think we go down from one through now nine and try to make sure we come to a conclusion. I hope that one or two of you possibly will go ahead and work on some sort of a motion on approval or denial, given some of the feedback we got today as a board and some sort of a direction that we are going. So reminder that we also have to approve a consistency statement as well. So with that, one of the things that I wanted to do here is combine one through three conditions that the applicant is requesting because I think that they're the, really the same answer from us. Does anybody have any concerns about granting those conditions? David, do you have any input? Any concerns? We feel that we're fine with those. So let's go ahead and discuss the number four then, the setbacks, the front yard 25 minimum, the side yard 15, side street yard 50, and rear yard 20 foot minimum. Are there, those are more restrictive than our current PDO requirement? Are there any concerns?
Very comfortable with that.
Everybody's comfortable?
Well, I appreciated the applicant's clarification that in the VMU district, the requirement is actually no more than 10 feet. So it is, we are saying you can have a farther setback, which generally seems like it's less restrictive. But in the case of that zoning, it's more. But I mean, yeah, it seems obviously reasonable.
So you have no concern at all as well? Okay.
All right. So. Jeremy, I just want to make a point of clarification. There may have been a Scrivener's error in what's translated from the applicant's condition table and into the, they were actually requesting for the 20-foot side street setback. It's 50 in the table that's provided.
Which is consistent with the OP district.
Just for clarifications, make sure.
Does that change anybody's feeling? 20 foot instead of 50? All right. So the signage, I'm pretty sure we'll have some sort of a discussion here. 50% increase. Where are we with that? Who wants to?
I'm going to ask Alex if you could please bring up your lovely table.
Has gotten a lot of play this evening. Thank you.
It's terrific. Okay. As I understand it, what the applicant is actually contemplating at this time is an increase in one wall sign and in two, so two wall signs, and increase in the large ground sign out front, and that's one contemplated at Carolina Vista, and two, and some internal ground directory signs. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there were.
Don't really need larger ones for that?
No, those were fine. Those didn't need an increase. Was there a larger wall directory sign or no? So it's just really those three signs, the two, the two wall signs and the one ground sign?
That's correct.
Okay.
Julia, I've got something sketched I could throw out there for consideration.
That would be lovely, Alex. Thank you.
So maybe a revised condition number fine could be allow for increase in sign area by 15, by 50%, limited to the location and type indicated on the general concept plan sheet L 2.0 exhibits A, B, and C.
That works. Yeah. Yeah, exactly.
Does that allow enough flexibility for what you all have in mind?
Yes.
Agreeable?
Board?
Do we need to put a date on that general concept plan in case it changes? As dated, such and such.
And is one of those signs the one that's on the road, the public road?
Yeah.
Okay. Does that become out of scale with the other village signs that are around facilities or the entrances in and out of the village? I would say it needs to be within scale of that. So I would not be agreeable with increasing by 50% interior to their properties. No, you know, no problems. But I want to make sure it's within scale with the other signs that we have in the village.
And keep in mind, too, that this sign area is limited to the village mixed-use zoning designation specifically, which has, I think, the smallest allowable signage within the other village zoning designation. So let's take, for instance, the new Pinehurst Elementary School. It's in our 10 zoning district and they're permitted typically up to, I believe it's 16 square feet for a ground sign. If you've gone by the new elementary school, you see their ground slash monument sign out there. And what's proposed here is pretty consistent in size with that. So I would say, I mean, I don't have the facts and figures around of all the signage, but consider the village mixed-use area more the area along the community road there at intersection close to Magnolia, like with the manor. There's very few areas within our jurisdiction that is zoned, village mixed-use. And they're typically smaller lots, smaller sizes with orientation of the buildings up closer. So you're more pedestrian scale. So you don't need typically larger wall signs. You don't need larger ground signs.
More like what we see on Chancapin.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, and that's a little, and I think even that, the village commercial district, you're permitted, I think, a little bit larger for a wall sign. I think you can go up to I think you can go up to 12 square feet. We're here at six square feet. Typically there, again, the buildings are a little bit more bulkier and have more mass there than within the village mixed-use district. But this is the most limited.
Gotcha, and how does it compare to what we see in the hospital medical area?
Which is much, much larger.
Much larger.
Much larger.
Signs would also still have to go through the historic committee?
Correct.
For approval? And then, so what we're talking about is the condition would only allow the signs as depicted on the general concept plan along Carolina Vista, is that correct?
Correct.
20 miles, 25 miles an hour, you've got to go around a, you know, turn around. You know, if you miss a sign, you probably don't need to be driving, regardless of size.
Those would be fine, because they'll front Carolina Vista, the ones that are on.
So if it was limited to frontage of Carolina Vista, and it's still had to go through the historical committee, you're still not okay with it? It's okay?
Yeah, I would leave the size as what it is. Yeah, because that's in standing with all the other signs that are in that area. I think there's a couple on Carolina Vista entrances in either to the club or Carolina.
Anybody else share that same feeling or something different? You agree with Paul? Okay.
I am comfortable with the 50% increase. If we keep it at that designated area and knowing that it has to go through HPC, I'm fine with it, but...
Head and get Philip, Matt, and David's opinion on that new proposal.
I'm fine with the increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it.
So the, even with the increase, the height, the allowable height of the sign doesn't change. It's still five feet. It's just basically we're talking about the length changing?
The sign face area, basically.
Right, but it's not going to get any taller than as tall as it already could be?
Five feet maximum, correct. And that's for the ground sign.
Right, right, yeah, for the ground sign.
And they can do five foot currently as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with allowing the increase on that sign.
So I don't know if that'll hold us back or not, as someone wants to make a motion one way or another upon that. Any, do you have any suggestions otherwise, the way it should be possibly? Just as is?
No, I don't. My recommendation, let's go through all the ones, and then we can just vote on them down the list like we've done before.
Same as well, okay. Is it okay if we go ahead and move on then at this point in time? Well, let's go ahead and vote on that the way that it is. Well, I think we just did. We have one, two, three, four to two, as comfortability.
Although that's more of a, you're just taking a poll. It's not actually a motion and, yeah.
All right, so let's go ahead and, so we've taken the poll. Can we do a motion?
If someone would like to.
I mean, shall we go ahead and go through the rest of them and then decide where we are?
Okay, all right, so let's just go ahead and move on to number seven, the parking spaces, considering the museum center. Any changes with number seven, the museum center, the administrative offices, and the golf equipment?
Alex, can you go back to the conditions?
Are we going back to the sign slide later?
There you go. Yeah, you're going to go back to it again, don't worry.
So can you show, yeah, perfect. So let's go, yeah, we didn't jump numbers. So let's go talk about sidewalks real quick. There was another sketch that staff has come up with as a condition, and I'll read it here, and I believe you guys may know about it. So sidewalks, "In lieu of a sidewalk along Cherokee Road, the applicant would still provide a minimum of five-foot wide easement and provide a financial guarantee of future construction of a sidewalk."
Clarify, that's not specific to the location along Cherokee, right? The intent of that language is that it is flexible to be accommodated elsewhere on the site, is that true?
So it says, "In lieu of a sidewalk along Cherokee Road," so in lieu of that sidewalk, the applicant will provide a minimum of five-foot wide easement and provide a financial guarantee. So that five-foot wide easement, would that also need to be along Cherokee Road, in your opinion?
Where would that stretch?
I think that's something that we'll have to work out in conjunction with, between staff and the applicant as we more formalize plans in the future. There's, you know, we've already identified some constraints and impediments on how ultimately we want to have that type of connectivity and further what type of path we would ultimately like to have long-term there. So it's nothing we're going to really finalize in the next couple of months. So I think having something like that and having to get us at a jumping off point down the line, I think that works, because it, if we start trying to draw the line, I think we might even, we could negatively impact ourselves in the future.
You want to add language, just to clarify, to say, you know, to ensure maybe too strong a word, but to ensure connectivity with the contemplated walkability of the, something that makes the intent of the condition clear, or does that just muddy the waters?
Lacking any specifics is going to be tough to administer anyway or enforce, if you will. It still would be up to interpretation of staff, so I think we're, I think we're comfortable with what we've provided. This is a rough sketch that Jeremy just kind of read at this point to kind of work it out a little bit further.
I think the sidewalks is very similar to the greenhouse right now. The greenhouse is not planned, it's just templated in the plan for approval. You can put sidewalks in there too. You know, at a later time, they can determine, you know, as the village puts in sidewalks, what the surface is going to be, whether it be concrete, you know, clay or something else.
The PDO requires that every frontage would have a sidewalk, so should the condition speak to the other frontages on five and there's already a sidewalk in Carolina Vista, or it's on the other side?
I think five is almost unattainable with the...
Well, but that's where an easement would give you that. So if there was an easement for a sidewalk, I guess the idea would be if it would connect, it would go through the property, and then once it's constructed, that sidewalk would be public, but it would possibly connect down to the resort property and to that existing sidewalk that's kind of below where the cradle, where the cradle is now. So when I hear easement, I think we're trying to do something obviously outside the right-of-way, so was that in the thought?
Yes, the thought is that depending on where the ultimate location is, you know, of that sidewalk, it could end up becoming internal to Carolina Vista. It could end up, we're not certain, you know, as the village continues to work through the plan. Just giving us that flexibility, I think the, you know, the fee and the guarantee of that provides the flexibility, you know, and the guarantee for the village as well as the location to be flexible and located from a design perspective.
But it would be coming through the property.
Yeah, it would be coming through the property and connect, yes.
So the opportunity for the village would be to have a walkable connection that's possibly through the property at that point in time, that may mitigate the train trestle, that may mitigate that corner section, could also be in another area. It allows flexibility for them to negotiate with you at a later time. There may be some specifics put on that with council, and then some financial incentive from your side to help that happen.
If staff's comfortable that that gets the job done, so am I.
How about the wording from us as a group? Is there any, is the wording, does wording give them enough opportunity to discuss the specifics at a later date?
I'm just not clear myself on why it calls out Cherokee specifically.
And that's because 9.16 of the PDO requires all-site development to install sidewalks along frontage of existing streets. So that would be the development, because it would be fronting the Cherokee Road. There's already sidewalks there along Carolina Vista, so it doesn't apply there. So it would be just along Cherokee Road. We, the property doesn't directly abut NC Highway 5, as it has other resort area also, the railroad right-of-way that would, you know, between there.
It looks kind of like the northern part does abut five, but it could be deceiving from the plan.
My opinion of that is we've taken the village from a position with the condition of losing to put them in at least a position of ultimately gaining what they're trying to achieve a little bit more. So that's my thought, since, but you have, you two have the legal knowledge, and then you, of course, have the specific knowledge and as well application knowledge on this side, so please join in with that. That's just my initial thought.
Matt, we could also take out Cherokee Road to be just so specific, and it could be, "In lieu of installing a sidewalk along the frontage of existing streets, Tomma, you know, the applicant will provide a minimum five-foot wide easement and provide a financial guarantee for the future construction of a sidewalk to be determined by the applicant and village."
So that's really just clarifying the number six condition that they had requested initially, because they were saying that they don't have to provide a sidewalk in lieu of an easement.
Yeah, and again, they added some extra language there as a footnote, you know, that, in lieu of that, you know, because again, there's been all this discussion that, you know, maybe an easement can work, but that along with having a financial guarantee to, and then determine future location, and we can work it out.
You know, we've had these conversations before. I think the last time we had them was with the village chapel. You know, the village is installing sidewalks, you know, and I think, you know, we, as a PNZ, need to make sure that is enforced, you know, because for-profit organizations, now we're going to pass, you know, expenses on the taxpayers. You know, it's...
Didn't the condition call out the financial obligation?
Yeah, that's, yeah, correct. Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
No, I think it's, I think it's a great contribution that you suggested, Paul.
So could this sidewalk be between the buildings coming around to somewhere? I mean...
Or to the south, like on the lower edge where it's closer to that train trestle crossing that's already there? I mean, we think there's a lot of opportunities to come through, and we just want to get it in the right place.
I think the plan that the village is working on will identify where we're trying to connect. So points to connect, and then we can identify how we get to those points. So I think there's work to be done on that front as well, so we just need to...
So you're willing to work with the village to make sure that it is accessible to people from that area? Okay.
Absolutely. So do we need to go around the horn and vote on the way that it's worded currently? Is that going to help out? Let's start from there.
Are you polling?
It's polling. Yes, polling. Let me clarify, polling. David, initial thoughts?
And can we restate it?
Let me restate it. "In lieu of a sidewalk along Cherokee Road, the applicant will provide a minimum of five-foot wide easement and provide a financial guarantee of future considerations of a sidewalk."
I don't know if we need to be more specific on the guarantee. Is it 100%? Is it 50%, you know, or are they paying for the higher addition?
Our current policy is 125% of the cost.
That's a policy?
That's the current policy, then, whatever the current policy is.
So do you feel that we need to put that in, or do you, the wording is okay?
In conformance with current policy?
You said 25%?
Yes, and of course, that's if, if and when they, or the applicant would construct that, then that money's released, of course.
So I think the suggestion from Jules is to put a financial guarantee in conformance with the current policy. Good, Matt?
I'm in agreement unless we wanted to ask that they would, like, change it 25% to a greater percentage. Because basically, if we didn't, if we didn't allow them to deviate, they would build the sidewalk now, and it would be a part of the project. I mean, that's to Paul's point.
Up the percentage.
Yeah, I mean, if we could consider, would the applicant consider, I mean, covering the cost of the sidewalk completely? I mean, I don't know what kind of linear footage we're talking for sidewalk, but, and you already have some walking path planned, so I don't know if there's an intersection there.
So the, our financial guarantee policy, you may have miscommunicated, is 125% of the cost. So it's 25% on top of the cost.
Right, the current policy, right.
That's a pretty good deal. I'm comfortable with it.
Bold.
That's why I thought 25 seemed a little low.
Okay, got you, 125, please forgive me. Sonya?
I just told him he just got his 125. Agreed.
Philip?
My question is around this specific location of the easement. Are we going to put any parameters on that, or is it just the easement can be anywhere?
Object to approval of the village.
Done in cooperation, determined in cooperation, the location to be determined in cooperation with the village.
Okay.
Well, sidewalks are normally along the side of roads, right? Okay, so you can't give them credit for a path that is internal to their facility, right? So I would certainly say along McKenzie. I think that's what we're striving for, right?
Cherokee.
Cherokee.
Cherokee. Stand corrected, thank you.
So, yes, to answer the question, typically the sidewalks are located within the right-of-way, and that way, the, you know, we would maintain them. They will be ours after a warranty period, after they're constructed and inspected warranty period. However, because of the constraints and the reason in why the applicant is requesting this condition, and why we're, staff is kind of revising their recommended condition, is that we just don't know. There's too many, there's too many constraints there, so I don't know that we're at a point to try to limit that location.
Subject to the approval of the village would allow them to put it in the optimal spot?
Sure.
So again, the language that I had crafted, the conclusion of that statement was to be determined by the applicant and the village.
Right, and I'm comfortable with that. If this is going to be done in concert, it's going to be done in the best interests of our residents as determined at the time when it goes in, and it's really hard to second-guess what that looks like now.
So at that time, you know, just to consider all the layers that would be involved, you know, we will be developing a multimodal path. We have forecasted to work out in fiscal year '23, so that's going to be soon. Also, you know, there'd be administration, staff would be looking at this, TRC will be looking at this, planning staff included. So there will be many eyes, and of course, we'll have to work that out with the applicant, the owner, and of course, their and our legal team.
And I assume we're going to bring in the other village constituencies, like we do have a committee that looks specifically at bike accessibility for Pinehurst. I assume that's going to be one of the voices, you know, in the conversation. This is something that we're looking at, you know, in a broader way as a village. So there are folks who are just better situated than we, who, you know, this is their job, connectivity.
We're not going to look at it under the microscope of this site. It's going to be the greater area.
Satisfied, okay. All right, so if we're all satisfied, let's go ahead and move on to number seven, parking spaces, as it equates to the buildings, and I think probably one of the main points of conversation would evolve around the golf equipment research, development, testing center. Where are we on that? Anybody have any strong conversation?
I think we need to change the numbers to 40,500 square foot, you know, and redo the estimate for the parking, because the numbers that it was done at was not the accurate heating and cold space. Is that correct?
And we can simplify that even more. I think what we can do is we can, if we can just follow along with the table here on the screen, you know, the condition could be the visitor center museum be parked at a minimum of one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area, period. Administrative office, the same, minimum one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area, period, and then for the golf equipment research, development, and testing center, basically no parking requirement for that square footage.
No one works, no one works in that building, or do they all?
They have offices.
Okay, okay, same people.
It's only equipment downstairs.
So, so to answer that question and try to alleviate any discrepancies.
Got it.
If it, if it, if it were to move up or move down, however, that gets adjusted when they get full detailed drawings, then, you know, the parking would have to be met and it looks like at 109 spaces, you know, there's, there's room.
Anybody else? Strong opinions one way or the other? Do we have, is everybody in agreeance that one space per 300 for the visitor center and museum, one space per 300 for the administrative offices and no additional spaces for the testing center? And that's currently what's being asked for by, in their conditions, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So whoever's making a motion, we may want to take those space counts down.
And abbreviate that.
Yeah. Because the discrepancy in the space is, I mean, they're still offering more parking than is required. So it is, it's more of a consistency than, than actually checking the quantity of spaces because 109 is above and beyond what the square footage would require per the P D O. If we agree that the zero can be used for the testing.
Testing center. Okay. All right. So I think we're in agreeance there. Let's go ahead and move on to number eight, parking surface. This is one where the staff is not recommending the condition approval. So let's discuss that and let's go ahead and kind of go around the, the horn, starting with David. Do you have any input on that?
I mean, if the only, it seemed like the only reason they, they weren't recommending that right now was because of the discrepancy in the, whatever documents we have. So if it's still, if, if whatever does get approved is still subject to further approval by the village or engineer, whoever it is, I think as long as it meets the requirements, you know, I'm all for sustainable materials and, and, you know, if, if that's what we're trying to do, then I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
I'll also make the point that the T R C at this point in time, I think was advising against it as well inside the pack.
And, and, and part of that is because, you know, we, we haven't really had something to really review against or to have a justification for granting that. And also there's, again, there's some, you know, no fault to anyone else, but some conflicting language between the two regulatory documents, the, the P D O and the engineering standards and specifications manual. So, you know, maybe the village engineer might be a little uncomfortable making a, a, a judgment call personally when the document that he is, you know, charged with upholding conflicts with the development ordinance for zoning regulations, development regulations, which this request is seeking a condition from.
We're not close at this point in time of making a suggestion from the parking surface, what you would prefer?
Not at this time. We haven't really gotten into any of those details yet.
Any sort of timeframe when you think you will make that decision?
Yeah, probably three months or less.
And you wouldn't make that decision before your concept plan with council, I would believe.
Probably not that quickly. Once we, once we have approval, probably three to four months after that date. If, if we were to get approval from village council, it would be three to four months after that date. Once we really get into the construction drawings and the details and working with staff through the, through those permit drawings.
Specific engineering. I mean, there's a lot of layers of detail to make sure that what we're proposing would actually work before we would bring it to staff. So, I mean, it's just, it's more of like identifying options, pursuing it internally from a design standpoint, testing it from an engineering standpoint, preparing documentation. So it just takes some time.
I understand. So, so they're not able at this point in time to, I guess, make a pinpoint detail of what they would make it out of. So still okay with that?
Oh, to me?
You want to be?
Yeah. You know, one, it's hard to go against recommendation of the T R C. And if, if the applicant said they were, I mean, I, I kind of agree on the lead certification as I have a lead credential and, and I think it's, I mean, I totally agree with the point. So if they were pursuing a credential and needed it for that, it would in a way be more worth it, I think, to grant the variance or the condition because it would give them points towards something that they're spending the money on. But with, without specific material or understanding of what, you know, even if they recommended a different percentage, I guess I'm kind of on the fence, but I would lean towards agreeing with the staff recommendation to not allow it as a condition.
You know, I want to allow this.
I agree with you.
You know, it, it really, it really comes down to the fact that I love the sustainable nature. And if we can eliminate in a safe way and a way that from an engineering standard works to remove asphalt and give us more impermeable, less impermeable surfaces, especially with the water runoff issues in that area, I am all for it. However, I am not an engineer and I do not want to put us in a position where I'm recommending something that T R C has shaken their head at me.
And, and again, too, it, it's not that we've had an opportunity to review something. We have differing, say you have an engineer's opinion on a specific proposal and then you're differing from that. It's just that in absence of, we know what we can hang our hat on and that's what our standard is.
Sure. And at the same time, I do not believe this particular applicant really wants to put themselves in a hurt locker and put in a parking lot that's going to be an awful disaster and sink their project. I, I have a lot of faith in this applicant wanting this project to be a resounding success. So in light of that, I'm going to say I'm, I'm all right with allowing this particular condition to move forward.
I agree with her totally.
All right. Phillip?
I mean, the point I was, I was stuck on, but Bob said he's made all the calculations based on asphalt or stormwater. So to me, it's not even a question of asphalt or not. I kind of defer to you. I don't, I don't know. I mean, without knowing, I mean, the writing here in the language doesn't say anything about sustainable. It says it in a bullet point lower, but it's not written in the language here. So I kind of want to pull, call that out. Is that? If you were to go to the condition, does it say anything sustainable here? So if that, if you want to hold that?
Well, sure. I, I would like our condition to include that this surface is, you know, a, a sustainable one, you know, that, that the, you know, we want to meet the goals that have been clearly communicated to us by the applicant.
The additional bullet point for number eight, it, it does call that out. If that's just becomes part of the condition, that, that would be fine. And, and really what we're asking for is the ability to present an alternative with asphalt, again, being the baseline, but being able to present the alternative. At this point, without the condition, we, we can't even present the alternative. So that's what we're trying to, to accomplish.
In any case, we're beholden to the final determination of, of staff and the engineers.
So T R C would still have to approve it.
They would still have to approve when we had a final solution.
So it, it, it could, it could potentially put some staff in, 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 you know, obviously we would confer with, with others, but, you know, it, it does kind of put the onus on the village engineer and that's, that could be a responsibility that this person may not want, especially if we're talking about adding some subjective terminology like sustainable material, you know, that could be differing in one design professional's eyes than another. However, that is, you know, that, I, I, you made the point, Julia, that it's, it's, it's in the applicant's best interest to provide something and get something that is an alternate material that will work long-term.
I, I have a lot of faith in our staff.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah. I think it, obviously we've been talking about this for a while. This may be the second or third conversation. It may have been helpful to have that alternative solution. It could have convinced it's the right one and we wouldn't have been talking about this at all. So I, you know, Alex used the word subjective. I like to remove that from my life and my objective answer would be it's asphalt 75% until a suitable alternative is found is the way I would go.
Yeah. The only, the only point I'll make on that is I, I think for me, as a member of the planning and zoning board, whenever I'm thinking about conditions, you know, it becomes a net positive or negative to the public in the village. And without a, a specific, we, we don't have that information to make that determination for me. And I, I don't vote today. So, but that's my only really input there is does each condition really put us in a good position? And, and I think that was a tough one for us as a board. So just understand that part. Okay. Are we close to making a motion?
Where are we on nine?
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. So let's go ahead and move on to number nine, which is a staff additional recommended condition. Permit location of proposed greenhouse structure as depicted on the proposed general concept plan. We discussed that earlier with the applicant and they are agreeable to that. Is there any board member that feels one way or the other?
I didn't ask this earlier, Alex, in your presentation, but can you just explain what it means to permit it? Is that because it would be within the setback that they're requesting?
Yes. Basically it's all about placement.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable with that? We can go around the horn if we need to. Okay. Everybody's comfortable? All right. So are we close to a motion?
I mean, the only thing that I would bring up, and this may be small beans, but, you know, a person who gets building floods in Southern Pines all the time because of storm water management, poorly managed or water management, you know, do we want to put in here to make sure it's the 25 year storm vice the 10? Because in the written documents, it says 10 year storm versus the 25 year storm. I don't know what the difference is, if it's like a raindrop or two or 20 inches, you know? So I'd certainly want to capture that because those who live here, you know, when we have our bad storms, you're driving through puddles and it looks like you can swim through. Yeah.
So, so are you suggesting that we make that the condition of number eight?
Either way, it just comes back with the proposal that it's more restrictive on the storm water management. There is, the contour lines are very steep, you know, there could be some quick erosion and water going onto highway five in an area that we know floods underneath the trestle when you, when there's a storm there.
So currently where we are, we have nine conditions to consider and we have to formulate a, a, a motion. And so I think we've identified two areas where we differ a little bit as a, as a board. So I think at some point in time, we have to, one, talk about our consistency statement as well as formulate the motion and vote on it. Does that sound? Who's prepared?
Maybe just vote like on each one?
Well, it sounded like from our straw poll, as much as I, it makes me sad to say, it sounded like condition eight wasn't a place where we're going to get. I, my brain is so in board of adjustment. Remind me what we need for P N Z.
As, as far as a motion?
Yes. Oh, no, as, as far as for the motion to carry.
Oh, just simple majority.
Simple majority. Oh, we're closer than I thought.
And, and Jeremy, don't count yourself out just yet. You, you only vote.
Far but the tiebreaker.
If there's, and then there's an option for that today, right?
So should we poll again on the parking area question?
I think we should.
Okay. So we want to poll again on the parking surface, number eight, after hearing the most current information. Is that right? So let's just take a poll, a simple poll of yes or no on the condition, starting with David. Yes, let's go with the condition as written.
With the.
Or hang on a second. Jules, do you have a proposal? Okay.
No. From the discussion.
I think what we're basically seeing is either planned as asphalt or some other yet to be determined surface material.
Well, more than that, Paul. It's a yet to be determined surface material that meets the approval of. And the question is whose approval is that? Is it T R C? Is it the engineer? There was some concern about whether or not the engineer wanted to take on that, where there's some subjectivity in that decision, you know, what is sustainable? You know, I'm wondering if there is a condition that can be reached that would meet the comfort level of both P N Z, oh, I should not say both, of P N Z staff and the applicant. I'm, I'm.
Oh, can, can I take a stab at it?
Yes, I would love you to.
All right. So maybe to, okay, so authorize the use of alternate and a more sustainable parking surface, provided that any deviations from the required asphalt graded and gravel requirements shall be approved by the technical review committee. I don't, I don't want to put it all on the village engineer. I don't want to put it on help planning staff. But that would be in coordination with, that would include village, you know, village managers. That would include village engineer. That would include fire marshal. That would include planning. That would include utilities if there's any other type of conflicts there. And I think we, I think we could cover it with that. I think between us all, we could figure something out.
And if that default, if not default, if that arrangement, if, if that consensus cannot be reached, then the default is the asphalt.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's what we've all been saying, just at two different angles.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ken, I'm not, I'm not sure that I can fully speak for the, for the T R Cs as they've not had an opportunity to review any revised language, but, you know, their recommendation would, our group recommendation would still be the same because we don't have a quote unquote alternate sustainable material to review against, but I'm just trying to help you with some language.
Sure. And I'm, I'm sure that between now and the time it comes before council, who has the final say on that, if this language really is giving the T R C heartburn, that will be communicated in the interim.
So to put, to put it a different way, so the T R C has said, we don't recommend allowing more than 25% of non-asphalt. But what we're saying is that we would ask, we are going to allow the applicant to consider that option and then the T R C would have to basically evaluate again based on the option, which is about, based on the actual material, which is what we don't have today. So it is just kind of pushing it back to them and giving the applicant really more time to kind of build what the specific instance is because they could still come back and say, no, we are still just only comfortable with asphalt. Is that a fair read, David?
I think so, Matt.
You're multitasking.
Reword the condition based upon our conversation and let's see if we can get an agreeance upon that.
So the condition would be authorization to use an alternative and more sustainable surface material so long as approved by the T R C. Otherwise.
If no approval, then a minimum of 75%.
Right, right. If no approval, a minimum of 75% of parking surface area be asphalt and up to 25% may be graded gravel surface.
Generally, the village is pretty strict on this requirement. Like are, are variations given to this very often? 25%?
No.
Alex, do you got that wording?
I'm, I'm trying to catch up. Sorry. All right.
While Alex is doing the wording, it just kind of made me think that maybe we need to update some of this to sustainable surfaces so that we don't run into this again, you know, this needs to be.
Definition.
Yes. And, 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 you know, I, I kind of didn't like the fact that the engineer might not be comfortable with that. Maybe he can get some speed up on sustainable parking surfaces.
And again, I'm not picking on him and it's, it's not, because he's, he's not here to defend himself, but he didn't have anything to, to review.
Sure.
But you said he may not even be comfortable with a sustainable.
Again, because we, we're. Again, because we, we're only limited by what our code and requirements allow. And if they don't have a relief or another item or material we can provide, then we can't, then your, any applicant would be subject to the will of, and the power of, you know, the, the village staff. And that's.
But that's what I'm saying, we need to address this, because this should be coming up more and more to perhaps sustainable versus blacktop parking lots.
I agree. So does, is everybody clear on what the current amended condition is as worded?
I don't know if we need to, because sustainable adds some subjectivity in there. If we leave it an alternate, then I think that accomplishes the goal. And then still including the minimum of whatever's already there.
Well, and keeping in mind that it's the goal of our applicant to make it sustainable. It's not like they're going to come in saying, gosh, I'd love concrete instead, you know?
All right, so you would suggest changing the word?
Do you love concrete?
To what again?
Just authorization to use alternate.
Alternate, okay. So you're not worried about the word? Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
I am, because I, I think we all know what the goal is here.
Okay. All right, Matt, where are you currently on this?
So the current language in the PDO, unless there's another reference in nine-point-four-point-one-two says twenty-five percent of parking areas may be graded gravel. But the village, I think, has also applied that to other non-asphalt surfaces in their interpretation in the past. Is that right?
But there's, there's another section.
Okay. I just, in terms of terminology, it would probably be good to be consistent with what's in there and...
Can we just reference the PDO about what we're...
I, I mean, I don't, I don't think you have to necessarily reference the PDO. I think, you know, that's, it's mostly implied. But keep in mind too, this, you know, all this language that we're trying to come together, if this is the will of the board and the applicant, you know, it, it still may all circle back to, and which is already kind of.
Correct.
So, I was trying to find this.
My understanding is they're saying no because of the lack of information currently.
And, and a lack of a standard to apply.
When that happens, you default to the standard.
Yeah.
We're doing it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
What are you clear, you're comfortable with as worded, updated?
Yep.
You have to turn this over, and then, you're okay with that? Okay, all right.
I mean, I would like more.
You wrote it.
With the, with the wording that it's the, it's the TRC, since they're the ones that have kind of said that they're, they're not recommending it. I think, let's get them some more information and let them say that again if they, if they're still, feel that way.
I know.
I'm not comfortable with just leaving it to TRC.
I mean, I, I, no, I'm following it the way it is. They've already made their.
Well, they've already made their decision. I'm, I'm hopeful that this will buy some time before this comes before council, because I personally would like to see a different surface in there. However, I'm, I'm not an engineer. I'm, I don't think it's appropriate for me to second-guess them or impose my whim on a project of this size. So I, I have to, I have to nod to the experts, and I'm hopeful that this buys more time.
We're not getting rid of the standard that exists currently. So if they can't find something, or if they don't get the information that they need to approve it, then they still have that default to go to.
They have, still have to review the entire design.
Yeah.
Once it's completed. So they're going to be looking at it.
I think they have engineers that are going to study this too, and they may have some insights that our engineer is not aware of or the TRC. So when you bring your study, make sure you bring all that material.
Absolutely.
All right, Paul?
Yeah, I, I agree. Again, we default back to what the PDO restrictions are, you know, if a suitable alternative is not found. Yeah.
So, so you're not in agreeance with the way that it's currently worded?
Well, our proposed wording, I am. Yeah.
Okay, you are, you are in agreeance. Okay. So are we close to a motion?
I think, can you scroll up, Alex, please? I think we, on signage.
Okay.
Did we get that resolved?
Four to two. I don't think we need to vote. We know what the outcome is.
All righty, thank you.
So now we just need that.
Who's got the wording?
Motion, or we need to make a motion considering the consistency statement.
Come on, Jules, you like doing this.
No, I really don't.
Alex has been taking some, some verbiage notes here.
Yeah, I mean, I can read it if we've got precise.
Well, Alex, we.
If we just have notes.
Alex, do we make the consistency statement before the motion?
You can go ahead and make the.
Okay. So can I get a motion? Can I get a motion? Remember, everybody, we have templates, so please take a look at those. Can I get a motion regarding the consistency statement?
I move that the Planning and Zoning Board adopt the statement of consistency and authorize its chair to execute the document as a proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the 2019 comprehensive long-range village plan as described in the staff report prepared by Alex Cameron dated June twenty-third, 2021. Achieving goals in accordance with the comprehensive plan is considered reasonable and in the best interest of the public.
Do we need to have a voice vote?
We need a second.
Yes, second. So let's go ahead and take a voice vote, starting with David, regarding consistency statement.
I, I agree.
Very.
I'm in favor.
I agree.
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 The two conditions were the.
Microphone, please.
We're just discussing the consistency statement at this point in time?
Yeah.
Okay, agreed. So, so the consistency statement is adopted?
Motion on the recommendation on the proposed map amendment.
Here we go.
Now let's get a motion of the recommendation with condition.
You know you want to do it.
Okay. I move that we approve the rezoning request for parcel ID zero-zero-zero-two-five-eight-zero-zero to VMU slash CD Village Mixed Use Conditional District with the conditions as, as described and recommend the board adopt the consistency statement. Condition, to be condition one, to add to the table of uses Gulf Equipment Research Development and Testing as allowed within the VMU CD, add general office as an allowed use within the VMU CD, and add welcome center as an allowed use within the VMU CD. I say that one, okay?
Yes.
Uh, condition two will be setbacks, front yard twenty-five foot minimum, side yard fifteen foot minimum, side street yard twenty foot minimum, and rear yard twenty foot minimum.
Is this condition four?
Well, no.
Oh, two, forget it. Okay.
New condition.
Okay. So condition three, the signage.
Did we change the side street to twenty?
We did.
Got that.
To allow a fifty percent increase on signs as included on the general concept plan as dated.
June sixteenth, 2021.
Thank you.
June sixteenth, 2021. Condition number four, in lieu of sidewalk, the applicant will provide a five-foot easement and financial guarantee of future considerations, of future consideration of sidewalk.
I believe that was a guarantee in conformance with current, current what, Alex? Current standards, current?
Policy.
Current policy, thank you.
In lieu of sidewalk, the applicant will provide five-foot easement and financial guarantee in conformance with current, current village policy for future consideration of the sidewalk. Figuring out how to describe this one.
Minimum of one space per three hundred square feet of gross floor area.
That's right. The applicant will provide minimum one, for the visitor center museum, provide a minimum of one space for three hundred square foot of gross floor area. Period. For the administrative offices, the applicant will provide a minimum of one space per three hundred square foot of gross floor area. Period. For the Gulf Equipment Research Development and Testing Center, the applicant will not be required to provide additional spaces. And this condition number six. Did you write this one down? I can read it from your notes if you have it. Okay.
Authorize the use of alternate parking surface provided that any deviation shall be approved by the village Technical Review Committee. If an alternate material or surface is not approved, the surface shall meet the current engineering standards and specifications manual requirement. You can say that. That's fine, you can just.
As said. And number six. Number seven. The condition to permit the location of the proposed greenhouse structure as depicted on the proposed general concept plan dated six-twenty-one, twenty-one.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion in place. We, by Matt, we have a second by Julia. Let's go ahead and take a roll call vote, beginning on my right with Paul.
I concur with the stated conditions.
I agree.
I also agree.
So by unanimous, the motion is approved. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Really appreciate all of your time and look forward to working with you as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One down, two, one down, two more to go. So the next item on our agenda is another public hearing, public hearing number two for one-sixty D text amendments. Can I get a motion to enter into public hearing number two?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We are now in public hearing number two.
All right. So as expected, this public hearing item will clear the room. Yeah. All right, so in all seriousness, though, the purpose of this public hearing is to consider a series of proposed text amendments to the Pioneer's Development Ordinance, and this is to implement required statutory changes related to one-sixty D. We've been talking about this quite a bit. One-sixty D amendments are, of course, again, is a new state statute, which the intent was to consolidate CD and county statutes for planning and development regulation, which had previously been in two different chapters, had two different types of requirements depending on which section you were in. They were implemented beginning first of year 2019. And then, of course, we got ready to enter into a pandemic state. So the, the legislature gave us a grace period to enact these, effective date of today. So effective today, the statutes are in effect. But we're just starting to clean up a little bit of our, some of the amendments that we need to make are cleanup items and housekeeping were in largely good shape. And of course, as usual, the fine folks at UNC School of Government have been providing tons of material through the way and been a great resource for us. Effective sections, you notice this in your staff report as well, that was prepared to you graciously by Kathy, who has been doing all of the heavy lifting, really, for, for this, these proposed amendments. All references to one-sixty A are being now converted to one-sixty D. Conflicts of interest, there had been previous conflicts of interest, mainly for boards acting in a quasi judicial nature. Now it's for all boards, no matter what type of hearing or decision you're making, and staff as well. Mentioned types of public hearings, so there's going to clarify and define specific types of public hearings, which really just boil down to the quasi judicial legislative, which this board holds both of, and their combined duties, P and Z, and Board of Adjustment. Include accommodation for those with disabilities as an included variance standard for review. Remove existing regulations that are no longer enforceable. Modify vested rights language to be consistent with statute. These includes plans like we just previously reviewed, if they are ultimately approved, and a, basically a consistent duration of that vesting. Development agreements is a new section. It kind of lays out the process more than anything, just so it's clear for an applicant and for anyone administering the document subdivisions. We have to expeditedly review minor subdivisions now. Also, a new exemption by state law for settling of estates. And a lot of changes to the definitions to mirror those that are in the state statute and include some new ones that were included in statute. Also, some codification with the building code as well. So, again, your action, legislative public hearing, if you conduct it, you solicit input from the public, consider the staff recommendation, consider the 2019 comprehensive plan, take action on it, recommend approval, adopt statement consistency, recommend denial, statement of consistency or inconsistency, or continue in case you need more public involvement or questions to get. Staff recommends that you adopt the statement of consistency provided and recommend approval of the proposed text amendment. Of course, although the 2019 comprehensive plan doesn't state we shall be in conformance with state statutes, coming in conformance with state statutes is considered reasonable in the best interest of both the village and the public. That's it.
So I guess my initial question, maybe start some dialogue. Is, so all of the updated recommendations that you are making, what do you foresee as a ripple effect through our PDO of further changes or further conflicts that we may see as a board, or council may see?
I, I really don't think you will. I, I think the material that I provided to you guys, gosh, I don't know when it was, it was just, which is more informative, it's just, you know, again, the village, we, we were doing a lot of these things, we were operating in an appropriate manner. We're, we're not that largely affected by these amendments. It's, again, some more clarifying terminology, it's including some housekeeping items, it's knowing that there are conflicts of interest, you know, having a greater understanding of a few items. There are nothing that this board or village council is going to be greatly impacted by.
What kind of questions or input do we have as a board for that? I, I think, of course, it's a tough ask after the, the, the first public hearing. I think it's okay to, to say that. What kind of timeframe are we on for this, for these amendments? Obviously, the state has adopted them today. This just makes them in line with the state. Is that, is that what?
Yeah, they, they rule, they ruled today, the statutes. We've been aware of them, the staff, we've been to workshops, we've, you know, watched modules, we've, I mean, we, we've had discussions, we've reviewed. Kathy, again, who did the work for this, she's done how many of these for other, she's done four of these for, for other jurisdictions, so.
We have a lot, we have very little impact, really, on the, even what this verbiage says at this point in time, right? That's kind of where we are. So it's almost a procedural.
Yep.
Okay. Are we prepared to move forward with a consistency statement as well as? On public hearing?
Yeah, we're still in public hearing. No one signed up.
Okay. No one has signed up from the public. Is there any more questions from the board to the staff? Hearing, no questions. Can I get a motion for us to exit the public hearing and enter back into the regular meeting?
Yeah, I have motion.
Yeah, I have a motion. We exit the public hearing and move into a regular meeting.
So hearing the motion and the second, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposed, we are in the regular meeting. Are we prepared for a motion?
I, I just want to say thanks to staff, particularly in Kathy, for all your work on this, uh, to make sure that the village isn't breaking the law.
Yeah.
That is very important. Uh, I move that the Planning and Zoning Board adopt the statement of consistency and authorize its chair to execute the document as proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the 2019 comprehensive long-range village plan as described in the staff report prepared by Kathy Lyles dated June 24, 2021. Achieving goals in accordance with the comprehensive plan and state law is considered reasonable and in the best interest of the public.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, the consistency statement carries. Now, do we have a motion for approval?
I move that the Planning and Zoning Board recommend approval to the village, to the Pinehurst Village Council of the proposed zoning text amendment.
Second.
Hearing a motion, um, by David and hear a second by Matt, let's take a roll call vote, starting with Paul. Paul?
Approve.
Philip?
Aye.
Sonia? Jules? Matt?
Agree.
David?
I am in favor.
So the decision is unanimous? Passes? As approval, as approved. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the public hearing number three, electronic permitting. So can I get a motion to enter back into a public hearing?
Commission will enter a public hearing.
Second.
Hearing the motion and hearing a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None, we are now in a public hearing, number three, electronic permitting. Alex?
All right, the purpose of this public hearing is to consider proposed text amendments to the Pinehurst Development Ordinance in various sections, um, and this is in order to implement, uh, the use of the village's electronic permitting system for all permits and planning applications. Included an image of our homepage if you're going to submit for any type of, uh, zoning or building permit there. Um, of course, our objective, and this has been brought before this group for their consideration and input, um, we've been fairly progressive. Uh, one thing that we can say is the silver lining of the coronavirus pandemic is we've been able to really harness this technology and utilize that, and it has taken some time to gain some comfortability with both staff, um, but also our users as well, and we feel that we are at that level of comfort where we can propose these changes. Um, and this would, would, uh, would allow for electronic submittal of all the village's documents that are required for various types of permits and approvals from the village. This would include reverses to, like, forms, number of copies, types of submittals, uh, which really are now becoming more of a checklist to be included, uh, instead of just a, a listed or sometimes a, uh, uh, in, in sentence or paragraph form of requirements. Um, and so a lot of the bulk of these, these proposed amendments will be to the, uh, appendices in which they apply based on which type of permit or approval you're, um, seeking approval from, from the, uh, from the village. Uh, also lifted out of the staff report, and this is sort of a summary of list of changes. Um, and of course, chapter four, very little, chapter five with variances, even just a tad more. Text amendments, again, this is all like, uh, based on what you're supposed to, on a form provided to the village planner, so it's going to tell you a little bit more about what type of form. Same with chapter eight. Now you're getting into the bulk of the, uh, the, the changes are being made to chapter nine, which are design standards, which talk about, uh, your major minor site plans, your major minor subdivisions, and then your single family development, which again is like the meat and potatoes of a lot of our applications. We see our fence regulations as well. The appendices A through E, which is, there again, the requirements for submittals. Your action, again, we've kind of covered this a little bit this evening, it's a legislative public hearing, receive little or no public comment on this proposal. Hearing, um, a, a, after concluding the public hearing, you guys can make a recommendation of approval or denial and adopt a statement of consistency. Um, obviously, staff has recommend that you consider approval of this. One of our strategic opportunities in the 2019 comprehensive plan is to become a more digital village, live and work from home destination, and we think this could also accomplish that. Um, also, this is in line with strategy 6.6, which states we should evaluate the capacity of village hall to meet and increase service needs and demands of our residents, and I think we're really able to do that with this proposal. Um, one thing to, uh, consider, uh, uh, well, that staff's been considering, um, in case it helps with, with the board, um, once we get to an opportunity to discuss this with council, we are going to recommend a, a delayed action on this, so it won't be effective at approval of village council. That's going to give staff some time, uh, to really perform some workshops. We've been talking even as of yesterday about doing workshops with some of our customers and bringing them in and getting them familiar with it. Those who are not already using it, which we had a, we're at a higher rate now than we've obviously ever been with our system, to gain that level of comfortability. And we'll always have an out in case folks are just having some difficulty with that. So just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. That concludes it.
What questions do we have for Alex as a board input?
Alex, I asked this before, but what are the challenges? It's just the number of documents and type of documents, not just simply filling out the form on the portal?
Yeah, and, and the type. So the, the type, the format, and then has been the number. I mean, if you strictly read the requirements in the PDO now, it's, you know, 10 copies of this, you know, it's got to be this size, that, and, um, you know, provide a CD-ROM of as-built or something like that. We're, we've surpassed that technology now.
Got it, thanks.
So in some of your workshops, um, who have you reached out to in the public? And of course, I've got to ask, have we reached out to the Moore County Home Builders Association and possibly Paul and aligning with him?
We, we've had correspondents with her as of this morning. We, we unfortunately, maybe we got our lines crossed and was looking at a 9:30 appointment earlier today, but, uh, there were conflicts with that, so we may be meeting with her as early as next week.
Okay, okay. So i- in us adopting this tonight gives you the opportunity to move it forward, but in still, you will still mold it, I think, based upon these type of meetings and, and reaching out?
Yeah, the, I mean, there'd be opportunities to fine tune it as we go, and, and at some point, once it's, it's fully enacted and we're operating in it, we have the opportunity to make any revisions that, that we may need.
I have to be honest and say I don't, you know, looking at our board after a very long, drawn-out, um, you know, public hearing number one, I want to make sure that we don't just adopt this very quickly, you know, without vetting it.
And, and that's part of the reason why, when we've had some downtime, we have, you know, even more recently, last, the last meeting, we, we wanted to kind of bring this by a final review before we made a call for public hearing and invited, uh, those from the public to, to review this. And this, I mean, this isn't, we, we've been talking about this for, for quite a while now, and I've not heard of any negativity in the, uh, by any of our users or customers that this is something that they just, that they can't conform to.
I feel like we hit this with a fine-tooth comb last month.
I remember, or wasn't.
And we incorporated, of course, David had the bulk of the recommendations, and we were able to, uh, incorporate those, so we do appreciate that.
So really, my question is, one, do we have any more questions? And as a board, are we prepared to make a determination upon this public hearing, um, to where we can adopt a motion to, to move it forward?
One question, remind me, is this a requirement or it's optional?
We're going to build in some options there if we need to.
Did I ask him?
Okay. So you're currently comfortable with the situation? Okay, and you've built in the options for somebody who just says, hey, I may not ever own a computer or technology, it's just not my thing?
No, we haven't been requiring CD-ROM.
I mean, they've stopped making computers, CD drives, so at some point, it's kind of adopter, adapter, overcom, and overcom, so.
So, so let's just, for the sake of moving it forward, if we have any more questions, please take this time to ask them, vet them. If we do not, do I hear any opportunity for questions? Are we prepared to present a consistency statement motion as well as a motion to?
When we move out of public hearing?
Once we move out of public hearing, yes, which, can I get a motion to move out of the public hearing and back into the regular meeting?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposed, we are now in regular meeting. Prepared for a motion?
I move that the Planning and Zoning Board adopt the statement of consistency and authorize its chair to execute the document as the proposed zoning text amendment is consistent with the 2019 comprehensive long-range village plan as described in the staff report prepared by Kathy Lyles dated June 24, 2021. Achieving goals in accordance with the comprehensive plan is considered reasonable and in the best interest of the public.
We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Let's take a voice vote. Um, David?
I'm in favor.
Matt?
Aye.
Agree?
Aye.
Concur.
So it is unanimous, um, it is approved. Thank you very much. Alex?
That was just a.
That was a consistency.
Consistency.
Just a statement, okay.
But I can, I can hit you with the next motion, too.
Not to move us ahead.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Board recommend approval to the Pinehurst Village Council of the proposed text amendment.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and a second, so now we'll take a voice vote. David?
Aye.
Favor.
Agree.
Aye.
Approve.
So now it's unanimous. Thank you very much. We, we, thank you very much, Alex. Um, so the next thing on our agenda is the next meeting date of August 5, 2021. It'll be a regular meeting. Um, are there any conflicts involved from anybody?
I will not be here. I'm on vacation that week.
On vacation, any other conflicts?
Yeah, I'm deployed.
You're deployed. So we have Paul and.
Are we gonna, are we still doing the call-in, or is it all in person? All in person?
Okay, person. Okay, so we'll be without you two. Um, so duly noted, can we get a motion?
One second, one second, one second. I know it's a long night, but I, I have a couple folks I would like to introduce, if I could.
Please, any other business.
Do we need to move out of public hearing into our regular meeting, or are we?
Just did.
Okay, okay.
We did before you did your statement of consistency.
Yes.
You know, it's all a blur.
I understand. Um, so on my right, your guys left, if you look at me, uh, we welcome Shannon Constantino to our department, and, um, you will be seeing her a lot, you will be seeing communication from her a lot. She is now going to serve as the clerk to this board, uh, so we are very excited to have her. She's been with us three weeks, three weeks now. Um, so we've, we're, we're very excited to have her. So, uh, a lot of the roles and duties that you guys remember Kelly performing is, this is the, this is what Shannon will be doing, and she will be making it on, and we're, again, very excited to have her.
Welcome.
And she provided a lot of the material that you guys have in front of you, including those, uh, motion templates that she worked with me this afternoon on, so appreciate that.
Welcome, Shannon.
Those are a lot easier without those conditions.
Yeah, we are, we're gonna. Matt was already.
It's a pro or a deny.
Matt was already knee-deep in it, so I wasn't, I wasn't going to pull him out. I was just going to let him muddle through it a little bit, but he did fine. And over here, we have our new senior planner, and this is Alexandria Rye. We're really excited to have her as well. You'll be seeing her, and hopefully in the future, um, you may be hearing more from her and seeing her up here at the podium and maybe not myself. And so we're, again, very excited to have her. She comes from us most recently with, uh, is it over five or six years with the city of Sanford? So she's, we're, we're very excited to have her.
Welcome, welcome aboard. Good to have you.
And finally, I do want to publicly thank Kathy, again, for doing, shouldering all that work for those others. She, she helped us get to the point where we can have more staff, so.
Hey, not to hold us any longer, but I think we need to show appreciation for us as board, staff. Thank you all for enduring this tonight. Um, without our chair, we're, we're very appreciative of everybody seeing this through. Um, thank you.
That includes Alex, too.
Includes Alex as well, yeah, Alex as well.
Of course.
But not Darren.
Jeremy. Jeremy came back from the beach just to do this meeting. Yeah, thank you, Jeremy.
No, thank you. Um, I wish you would have ran it a little smoother, but we are where we are.
No, no, we were great. Perfect. Um, and I, I spoke to Cindy this evening on the way here. Uh, she said she's resting comfortably. She misses all of us terribly. She was, um, watching, yeah, well, well, she, she, I, I told her she needed to turn, tune in because this was prime viewing this evening, so hopefully she was with us, but, um, she plans to be back with us next month and, you know, wished her a speedy recovery.
Great, I, I probably miss her greater than I was at this point in time. So, but thank you. Now can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.